Call to one of the special meeting of the Beverly City Council, Monday, June 29, 2020. Ms. Kent, could you please call the roll?
Ames.
I see.
Rotundo. Rand.
Here.
Flaherty.
Here.
Flowers.
Here.
Housman.
Here.
Flaherty, I mean, I'm sorry, Brady's.
Yes, here.
And Feldman.
Here.
Guanci.
Here.
All good. Councilor Hausman, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Yes, I will, Mr. President. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilor Hausman, as usual. I'm looking for Jerry Perry. Is Jerry here? Yes. All right, we have a public hearing scheduled for 6:15, but I would like to hear, I would entertain a motion to suspend our rules to hear from the city council budget analyst, Jerry Perry, about something Scott Hausman has been working on, municipal aggregation. Mr. Perry.
Good evening, Mr. President. Good evening, members of the council. Good to see everybody again. However, I've been asked, I would prefer to be brief, if I may, to talk about tonight at the request of Councilor Hausman, a little bit about municipal aggregation, municipal green aggregation. Pardon me?
Mr. Perry, I have to put you on hold just for a moment.
Sure.
I forgot to read my script. I apologize. It's the early starting time that has me thrown off. Script for remotely conducted city council meetings, Monday, June 29, 2020. As a preliminary matter, this is Paul Guanci, president of the Beverly City Council. Before beginning the meeting, I'd like to announce that this meeting is being recorded by the city of Beverly and livestreamed by BevCam on both Channel 99 and BevCam YouTube channel. I'm confirming that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present. Can everybody hear me? Excellent. Introduction to remote meeting. Good evening. This open meeting of the Beverly City Council is being conducted entirely remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, it seems so long ago, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID-19. In order to mitigate the transmission of the virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the governor's order suspended the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. All members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as adequate alternative public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting does have public participation. We have a public hearing for National Grid at 6:15, and then we have the public hearing for Briscoe at 7:15. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and televised live, and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, this is my favorite part, please be aware that other participants or viewers may be able to see and hear you, and anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. You have the option to turn off your video if you're participating via computer. All participants should keep their microphones or phones muted unless recognized by me to reduce background noise and feedback. Please wait until the person speaking is finished before speaking, so we can clearly hear all participants. In addition, please, in addition, because of the remote meeting, I'm going to read Rule 22 of the Rules and Regulations of the Beverly City Council. This is because we are taking committee votes tonight. Rule 22, "All subcommittees of the council shall cause records to be kept of their proceedings. They shall report by ordinance, order, or resolve unless otherwise noted, provided by law. No subcommittee shall act by separate consultation, and no report of 'as a body' shall be received unless agreed and subcommittee actually notified and assembled for the purpose in hand and signed by a majority of the councils of the subcommittee. Every subcommittee to which any subject matter may be referred shall report thereon as soon as possible after full consideration, therefore, in a vote thereon. However, if the council may be by majority vote or any matter pending for a subcommittee to be acted upon, the subcommittee at its next meeting, and will be forthwith returned to the full council." So we'll take a roll call vote right now. Ms. Kent will give us a roll call vote in a moment, and that will allow us to vote everything out on the floor this evening. Ms. Kent, roll call, please.
Ames.
Yes.
Feldman.
Yeah.
Flaherty.
Yes.
Flowers.
Yes.
Brady.
Yes.
Housman.
Yes.
Rand.
Yes.
Rotundo.
Yes.
And Guanci.
Yes. We do have two public hearings, one scheduled for now, 6:15-ish, and then one for 7:15. What I will do, we'll call the public hearings to order. I will ask the presenter or the petitioner to speak first. We'll go to questions from members of the city council, and then we'll go from questions to, from members of the public. When I ask for people to speak from the public, please state your name and your address, and then we'll take it from there. So that said, let's call it 6:15. Call to order a public hearing on order number 138, Petition Access Engineering Group, Sam Fonzio Drive. Ms. Kent, could you please read that order?
Legal Notice 2020, number 138. City of Beverly ordered that the city council of the city of Beverly hold a public hearing on Monday, June 29, 2020, at 6:15, remote on Google Meet livestream on BevCam relative to the petition, Access Engineering Group, to install PPC communication conduit base side of Sam Fonzio Drive to private property at 75 Sam Fonzio Drive, and this was in the newspaper on Monday, June 22.
And we have Ms. Shelley Cullen from Access Engineering to talk about what they would like to do. Ms. Cullen, thank you for being here.
Yes, thank you so much for having me and getting this on the agenda. Yes, Shelley Cullen with Access Engineering. I'm at 4 Blue Hill Ave in Newbury, and I represent Crown Castle, and Crown Castle is looking for a grant of location to excavate between an existing electric manhole onto private property at 75 Sam Fonzio, and this is to bring fiber optics service to that address. They currently have cable within the electric network.
Great, thank you. Do any members of the city council have questions for Ms. Cullen? Councilor Hausman?
Yes, just briefly. Ms. Cullen, Crown Castle, in my familiarity with it, primarily is a cell phone tower company, and what you've described is not for that. It sounds like it might be related. Is this in any fashion related to any cell tower facility, antenna facility, or so forth?
No, I believe this is just to connect the tenant at 75, which is Electric Insurance. So they also provide fiber optics for networking.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Councilor Feldman.
Yes, thank you. I just have one question. Is there any, I've been up there, is there any portion of the road that needs to be dug up to install this?
Yes, they actually have, dig up the side of the roadway as well. So this portion that's on the city right of way, it's only those 36 feet.
Okay.
The manhole that it's coming from is actually right along the side of the roadway.
Okay, and it's all, all the work is underground?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilor Feldman. Sam Fonzio Drive is your ward. Anybody else? Any members of the public wish to comment or ask a question about this? Hearing no further questions or comments. I'll close our public hearing, refer that matter back to the full city council, and I will ask for a roll call vote now to approve. Ms. Kent?
Ames.
Yes.
Feldman.
Yes.
Flaherty.
Yes.
Flowers.
Yes.
Brady.
Yes.
Housman.
Yes.
Rand.
Yeah.
Rotundo.
Yes.
And Guanci.
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Cullen. I hope that was the hottest thing you had to do today.
It was. Thank you. Have a good night.
Okay, Mr. Perry, I'm sorry I interrupted you, but I think Councilor Hausman would like to say something before we go to you. Councilor Hausman?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, just really briefly, when I introduced my resolution on green municipal aggregation, I requested that the vote be postponed for two weeks for the council to have an opportunity to learn more about it. In the meantime, I have been working with sort of a drafting committee, representatives from the mayor's office and the Green Energy Advisory Committee to come up with a substitute resolution, which would be a joint proclamation resolution, I believe. We're still sort of working on the language. But I'm not asking for a vote this evening on my resolution. I'm looking to wait until the first special meeting of the city council this summer after this evening's vote, meeting, excuse me. So I just wanted to let councilors know that I'm not requesting a vote on that this evening, and I have requested our budget analyst to speak a little bit on sort of his research and findings on green municipal energy and, you know, climate action by the city in general. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Hausman. Mr. Perry?
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me hopefully be a bit brief here. Do I do want to spend a few minutes going over some things? Councilor Hausman, over, I'd say, at least the last year or so, has been working and asking me to do some certain amount of research, not only as it relates to municipal green aggregation, which I'll talk about in a moment here, but also other things like climate change and energy-related matters, things of that nature. So what I'm hoping to do tonight, for as brief as I can, is give you my thoughts and opinions on specifically municipal green aggregation, then I'd like to talk for a couple minutes beyond that about another issue that I think this is the opportune time for me to give you my opinion. As you all know, I'm supposed to render an independent thought process as your budget, and tonight I'm wearing more of a management analyst hat, so some of those thoughts are going to kind of cross for you via consideration and review as policymakers within the city. With regard to the municipal green aggregation, that the resolution of Councilor Hausman has brought forward to you, I have spent the last week really looking at it pretty hard, but also looking at it somewhat over the last six months or so with the various conversations I've had with Councilor Hausman, and this is what my thoughts are, my findings. Specifically, the municipal green aggregation allows for the establishment of renewable energy and climate action, establishing of climate action goals while providing residents and businesses with savings, which as a business analyst certainly got my attention. How this works is the municipality, the administration would bring in outside vendors. There's about three of them that are in the business, and we put it out to bid, and certainly Dave Jellino of Procurement and our city solicitor's office would look at these to make sure if we were to bring in the right vendor for the city to meet the needs of the city. My review and analysis of these vendors is it costs the city nothing to bring them in here, which is a good thing, and some of the benefits that they can derive with regard to these areas include some of the following. They can help to reduce the carbon footprint and greenhouse emissions if we establish goals and objectives properly with regard to these areas. It allows for more competitive choices for the purchasing of electricity for Beverly residents. So competition is good in that area. It's not a monopolistic kind of issue in terms of buying energy. It allows for other energy providers to provide energy to the city ratepayers, if you will, and certainly is a good thing in my area. It also provides for long-term stability for the consumers with this, with having this competition on board, and I think it's a good thing. It ultimately, based on my research, can save Beverly residents money, which is obviously a good thing, and certainly in this day and age of COVID-19, the opportunity to save anybody money, I think is a pretty good thing. And actually, based on some of the review I've looked at, looking at this area could be an economic stimulus for the city. It's certainly a niche industry, if you will, to do this stuff, and the opportunity to maybe provide more jobs by saving energy is something that was on the table. I also discovered as part of my research that Metropolitan Area Planning Council assists communities, which we all know in planning and development issues, but they also provide an excellent source to assist communities to go forward with municipal green aggregation. Based on my research, I can tell you that they've assisted approximately 15 communities to get this up and running in the various cities and towns, and they have been successful based upon my research. There are also three communities, Medford, Millis, and Situate, are in the pipeline to work with them to bring it on board too, which I believe is a good thing. Part of, part of the entire process of going through this has to have oversight and review by the State's Department of Energy Resources. Based upon my research, I can tell you that in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, there are 173 communities who have already gone through this process of municipal green aggregation, and I have not been able to find any of them that have been unsuccessful. They certainly are some growing pains. As an example, the city of Melrose in the first year of 2017 saved the ratepayers approximately $200,000, and since then, they've even saved more money for the ratepayers of their respective city, which I see as an opportunity for the city of Beverly. Bottom line to this, ladies and gentlemen, it is my recommendation that we should proceed with establishing a municipal green aggregation program for the city of Beverly. I think it's good for the city. I don't see any downside to it, and I would suggest even, you know, I know Councilor Hausman and others are working on this, but I don't see any reason as soon as possible to get this up and running with his proposals working. I understand he's been working closely with Mayor Cahill on this, and as such, I think it's an excellent program, and I would recommend its adoption moving forward. If I may, Mr. President, just add some more commentary, if I could, which I think is appropriate at this time, and then I'll be more than happy to answer any questions anybody has. As you well imagine, we're in an era now where this is getting to be more and more complicated. Climate change, energy-related matters, municipal vulnerability issues. We are a seacoast community. We have the challenges of high tides and flooding and things of that nature. So these areas are getting more and more complicated, and what I've discovered in part of my research is that many other municipalities are being far more proactive in this area, and I think the time has come for us to discuss it in the city of Beverly. With regard to climate change issues, certainly, climate change could be a risk to the economic vitality of the city of Beverly, and we have to be cognizant and careful of that, especially with the coastal areas of the community. Certainly, science is indicating that we have this climate change challenge. I know there's some political issues in that area. I just happen to believe that it's a real deal and something we have to address here. We have to begin the process, in my view, and I've been working with the finance director recently. When we build our capital expenditure planning, we have to start building in climate change challenges and things of that nature associated with that, and certainly, as I indicated, the seacoast is certainly something we have to be cognizant of. I would say to you that the question is now, where do we go as a city with regard to climate change, municipal aggregation issues, green, you know, green space, things of that nature? What I've observed in other cities and towns is that municipalities, and I'd say 20, 30, maybe up to 40% of the municipalities have begun the process, have begun hiring what is known as sustainability coordinators. It is not necessarily new. It is something that is out there that needs to be done, and every week I see more and more communities looking to hire sustainability coordinators. The question is, what do these people do? What do these jobs have? And if I may, Mr. President, just quickly whip through some of the titles, because when you start to understand how complex this can be, you can see the challenges that maybe we're not really addressing in the city of Beverly. Specifically, these type of positions, they oversee a city's energy efficiency and sustainability programs, they coordinate energy efficiency, recycling, water conservation, greenhouse gas reductions, and environmental management programs for the departments and residents. They act as a coordinator for, they would act as a coordinator for Beverly's designation as a green community, including representing the city on various events and working with our grant writer for various grants. They coordinate external requests for information related to sustainability issues, and assist in the development of reports and communications to the residents. They conduct outreach efforts to promote sustainability. They act as a liaison to departments, organizations, and facilities on sustainability-related issues. They will coordinate and represent the city with local, regional, and state agencies on regional-related matters. They can identify opportunities for program funding and training programs. They design and implement education. They establish social awareness on the computers, if you will, with regard to the consumption of energy in municipal residential structures and educating there. I could go on forever. The reason I read some of this to you, and it is literally pages more of this, based on my observations, I know that Mayor Cahill has been working with Catherine Barrett quite a bit to come up with funding through the grant process for this type of position. I commend the administration for making efforts. It's certainly something they understand and acknowledge as being worked on, and I do compliment them on that. Unfortunately, we have as of yet been able to be successful in that area, but I'm sure they're going to continue working on that. But it's my view as your management analyst tonight, that the time has come that we have to consider a sustainability coordinator. Whether we do it through the grants, and it is a difficult budget year, and I understand that, but if not, certainly this year via the grant process, maybe we have to consider prioritizing this in the FY22 next year's budget, something I would ask you as councils to consider as policymakers, and certainly that of the administration. What I have observed, and then I'm getting near the end of my presentation, you nearly need someone with a technical background who can put this all together, coordinate everything, and bring it back to the city. As I understand it, we have a lot of talented people in the city working on this on an ad hoc basis, and they certainly have other duties, which sometimes drags them away from these kind of things, but more and more communities are doing this. As an example, I happen to know that Ashland and Andover and Framingham, and there's several other communities that have these kind of positions, and I think we need to be more proactive. In terms of what they'd be, what they're looking for, you're looking for an individual, at least from my research, that has a background, hopefully an experience in environmental science, engineering, public administration, and public policy. A lot of these communities are preferring to see people with master's degrees, so that's how you can see it's getting even more and more complicated, especially as we move forward, and they've been looking for people with five years' worth of experience. I've been seeing salary ranges, depending on the complexity of the community, starting anywhere from $60,000 up to about $100,000 to give you some perspective as to what other communities are doing. Members of the council, and I think the mayor's on board, is your budget and management analyst. I've been actually talking about this behind the scenes for about a year and a half to two years with some of you and as well as the administration. The time has come, in my view, to do or to have a sustainability coordinator. Let's try to work on the budget issues, whether it's this year through grants, or maybe even next year in the budget process, but I think the time has come. Mr. President, that pretty much concludes my commentary. I hope I haven't been too long-winded, and the two things is, one, I think municipal green aggregation is a good thing, and we should proceed with it, and two, I would ask you to strongly consider as policy players of the city of Beverly, the consideration of a sustainability coordinator. Mr. President, I'm more than happy to answer any questions you or your colleagues may have.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. How about Councilor Flaherty?
Yes, I'll be quick. The idea of doing this coordinator position, I think, is a good idea, but I'm also thinking about next year's budget and how we sustain our budget for next year, with the possibility we might want to look at, at least for the first couple of years, and I know some grant money might pay for this, but the idea of maybe collaborating with other cities and towns that have similar interests, so we can combine, whether this is a full-time job, and trying to get that technical position, which might be difficult to do, so the idea of maybe combining or collaborating with some other cities might be the way to go. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Other questions? How about Councilor Hausman?
Yeah, just briefly. I know there are folks in town who are sustainability coordinators. I think we have a resident in Beverly who is a sustainability coordinator for Boston College. There's a lot of talent that we can tap in the city already to sort of get a, get a handle on what would work well for us, both sustainably and also in a potential search for someone to fill this role. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Hausman. Councilor Feldman?
Yes, thank you. It was just about that possibility, piggybacking on what Councilor Flaherty had mentioned about dividing the role. I just had a quick question. If, is there anything that would put us at a disadvantage if we shared the position with other communities in terms of competing for grants or resources in a position like that?
Council, I would, I don't think so. I don't see, there could be, but I'm not aware of any. Certainly, I'm a big proponent of regionalization, and Councilor Flaherty's comments, I think, are spot on. Certainly, that is an option to consider as part of this as well, and I certainly don't think, I will say this, even if we had a regionalized kind of sustainability coordinator, it's certainly better than nothing. So if that's the beginning of how we grow into this, certainly that's a great idea.
Great, thanks. I'm just competitive.
Councilor Feldman? Mayor Cahill?
Hey, thank you, Mr. President. I want to, I want to say this is really exciting to be talking in these terms right now. I want to, I want to, I think, make a few thank yous to people, because we have made a lot of progress in recent years. Councilor Rand did an amazing job with the, with the plastic bag ban, and involving a lot of you folks as well. A lot of people deserve credit, and then Councilor Rand and Flowers, in particular, have worked with me on, you know, looking, looking at polystyrene and straws and other things, some things that really were kind of perhaps ready, almost ready to go, and then COVID has kind of knocked us sideways with some of that. And, you know, Council, Mr. President, and Councilor Rotundo, before you were on the council, you, you both did fantastic work as business owners to help inform that dialogue around, around some of the games we've made. Councilor Hausman, you've been an incredible advocate on a number of energy side initiatives, in particular, the green municipal aggregation. Appreciate the work we're doing together on it. So I'm just, you know, excited that we're where we are, and Mr. Perry, I appreciate, and I know we talked earlier in the year about the fact that there are councilors interested in the, in the sustainability director coordinator position, and certainly as we go forward, we should talk through how to structure that position, because there are a number of types of backgrounds that are relevant, and we would want to, you know, kind of move in the direction of getting the biggest bang for, for the buck. I think, again, if not for the pandemic, we, we may well have been talking about trying to create this position in the FY21 budget, and Mr. Perry's right that Ms. Barrett has been, you know, has been searching for opportunities to get it started, perhaps with grant funding. When, when it became clear that, you know, this budget year, and as Councilor Flaherty rightly points out, next budget year is going to be, you know, even potentially more difficult, I started thinking that, you know, hopefully the climate action planning process would, among its action item recommendations, would lead us to creating the position as well. So I think all of this is good. It's pointing us all in the right direction. I will also point out that in September of 2018, so almost two years ago, we as a community joined the Urban Sustainability Directors Network, which is really a North American, mostly US, but also Canadian organization, and Mrs. Bellotti, who at the time was, was Constituent Services Director, Project Manager, now Chief of Staff, has been our sustainability director since that time. But as Mr. Perry pointed out, what that really means is we've been working kind of by committee on a number of sustainability fronts, because that's something she's had to fit into all of her other job responsibilities. So I think the conversation is the right one to be having. We all recognize that the economic, you know, times right now make it harder to see it, but we'll keep looking for grant opportunities, and let's, you know, let's keep working through the conversation together and see how quickly we can get there. It absolutely is a place that we should end up as soon as we can afford to. So I thank you all for, you know, for the conversation on this. Appreciate it, you know, moving forward. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor Cahill, and I know that our grant coordinator, Catherine Barrett, is on the line. Do you have anything to add before we move on?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would love to add a few comments. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
You can. So So I had spoken with Mr. Perry previously about a grant-funded position for a sustainability director, and so I have had that on my grants research list. And unfortunately, I hadn't seen anything in 2020, and a lot of grant funding opportunities and sources went off the rails in mid-March with the public health crisis. So, but ideally, we'd love to have the position grant-funded. One year would be good, a three-year position would be even better, and a five-year grant would be really fantastic. A lot of times with the three- and five-year grants, they phase in the position, so they'll pay 100% in year one, 80% year two, 60% year three, and so on. So the city slowly takes on that position. So financially, it's a little bit more palatable for cities and towns. There are many, many cities and towns that have sustainability directors or coordinators. As Mr. Perry said, I think Andover, Newburyport, Concord, Cambridge, Brookline, Ashland, Framingham, a lot of the ones that were previously mentioned. So I think municipalities realize the value of having a grant, a sustainability director because there are a lot of grants out there for green and sustainable initiatives, and I work on a lot of those grants, so I know. And we probably could be securing even more grant funding in that area if there was a sustainability director to centralize that function and that role. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barrett. Thank you, Council Hausman, for spearheading the conversation, and of course, thank you, Mr. Perry, for always having our back. Next on our agenda, we have two people that would like to speak about elections. We'll go to Ward Three City Councilor Stacy Ames first. Ms. Ames?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I plan to be brief. Thanks for this opportunity, and as it's our last regular planned meeting before Labor Day, before the primary, I just thought I wanted to make a couple of comments. And first off is generally, you know, in the past, we've just run wonderful elections here. And I think that, given the fact that this is going to be a tough year and the team that's there, I think we still have, we have the opportunity to show how democracy works right here in Beverly. I had a couple of things that I wanted to talk about. The first was concerning the pole pads that have been purchased. I just had some comments, and hopefully they can lead to some discussions or some answers in the plan moving forward. The first is that generally with this device, very often, the most efficient thing to do is to scan someone's license or ID. And just for me, I'd like to say that we've never led with scanning IDs in the past, and I just hope that we can have conversations to speak to, hopefully continuing that process because I think in terms of civil liberties, that's really important for us to think about. Because I see my, part of my job as a city councilor is to enfranchise voters. The second piece that I just wanted to bring up is that this software, while I'm really super happy that it comes from the same, that it's being distributed through the same outfit that is working with our voting machines, this no-inc. software has had, used in different ways around the country, from Georgia to LA to Philly, a lot of issues. And so I think just to understand a really solid backup plan for even the early voting is really important to understand. And understanding that we have, you know, a limited staff and limited resources. And I think that, again, just like I said last week, we are all in this together, and the council is a check and balance to what happens here in the city. And so I represent voters who deserve, I think, to understand the voting process and to be able to make comments about the voting process. And as the grounds are still shifting on Beacon Hill, that I think that these conversations are just important to have. So thank you very much for this opportunity, Mr. President, and that's pretty much what I had to say.
Thank you, Councilor Ames. Now we'll go to Ms. Deborah Calabro. Ms. Calabro, thank you for being here.
Thank you. I'm Deborah Calabro, and I'm Beverly resident. Stacy Ames has asked me to speak to the more technical side of the system. I am a 30-year technology specialist, and I currently serve as Vice President of Technology Risk and Control at Wells Fargo. So upon being asked by Stacy to review this, I went onto the vendor site and took a look at their technical specifications, and I will tell you that they are light on details, and the system relies heavily upon the security that is provided by the Apple hardware and operating system. Additionally, there are other hardware aspects to it, including a USB drive, that there are no security details around. I would ask to have a conversation about how the city plans on utilizing the system. As Council Ames mentioned, there is a license aspect to it, but also there is a communication piece to it that requires to have access to the voter registration information. And there are several different ways that the system can manage that, and I'm looking to find out if we're going to be maintaining any kind of internet connection to either a state or city database, or if we are going to be using an upload protocol of our data to the pole pad system. And as I understand from an email I saw today from Ms. Kent, that there's a plan to upload our data to AHS, which is the vendor. There were no details on whether AHS would merely be a conduit for that data or if they would be storing it locally. If they're not storing it locally and providing access, then is it being stored on the iPad operating system itself? There were some questions around if we are transferring that data, is that a secure encrypted connection? And is the data at rest encrypted in and of itself? I understand that the city has already gone ahead and purchased the system, so I would ask, was there a vetting process done? Was your technology department engaged? Did they perform a due diligence review? Has there been any testing of the city at all? Is there a documented process on how this system will be utilized? And have you considered a fallback plan should the system fail in any way? And as Councilor Ames mentioned, just on a few aspects, the system has had large-scale and majorly impactful failures in cities such as Philadelphia, Atlanta, and as you may have seen on the news, Los Angeles. So I would like to offer my time this evening if anyone should have any questions about the risk that is apparent in the system and possible ways to address it.
Well, thank you. I'm sure Ms. Kent is going to have this under control, and if this is something that she can, obviously can watch the meeting, here, take your comments in and then answer some of your questions. Council Hausman, did you want to speak?
Yeah, just briefly. I saw a news item shortly before the council started its meeting indicating that the State House has passed legislation that will allow mail-in voting for both the primary and the general election. It's been sort of, you know, being worked on but not moving forward. It now apparently has been agreed upon. I guess it's probably going to go to the governor, but at least on that aspect of things for voting security, that piece apparently seems to be moving forward. The only other thing I would, I would, I would, I guess, sort of throw out there, because this, I don't know anything about this area at all on the technical side, is to make sure that our IT department, presumably, and Ms. Kent have been in conversation with each other just around cybersecurity aspects of this. That may have already happened, I don't know. This is not some, this is not an area I'm familiar with. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Council Hausman.
This is Deborah Calabro, and if I could just add one comment in about cybersecurity, there was a comment in the technical specs regarding the protocol and algorithm that they use for cybersecurity, but once again, that detail was lacking the level of implementation that they use in their system.
Okay, so Ms. Kent, you'll have the IT department check that out.
Can I say something?
Of course you can. City Clerk Lisa Kent. Ms. Kent?
So the pole pads that we have, Massachusetts has not licensed them for voting. They are still looking into it because of the safety and the concerns of fraud or anything like that. So what we want is for, purely for the COVID-19 safety of City Hall employees and City Hall and me and, you know, the workers of the election and the voters. It cuts the staff down in half. Nothing's ever on the internet, nothing ever is electronically done. It goes from my Ubi to the LHS associates. There's nothing that is where anybody else can get it to. It's my right here, and then it went to that one. And it's in a private, between the two of us, and then it goes on the polling pads. There's nothing ever, no outside, you know, communication or Wi-Fi, or nothing electronic is used. So what you're seeing in different states, really nothing to do with the ones that are in Massachusetts right now. They don't affect-
I would have to, I would have to respectfully disagree with that. If you are transferring, if you're transferring the data, then you are doing so electronically. And if the vendor is involved in that, then that opens up all of their security protocols and sites to review.
All right, Ms. Calabro, thank you for your comments. Ms. Kent, you also, this isn't the stage for a debate on this. It's something we'll look towards as we get closer to the election. Thank you both. And once again, thank you, Councilor Ames, for beginning the discussion. Now we'll move on to communications from his honor, the mayor. Ms. Kent?
Yep. Dear Honorable City Council, I'm pleased to inform you that the city of Beverly has been awarded a three-year grant from the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, MAS DEP, to fund a municipal assistant coordinator in the Northeast District Two. The grant funding represents $107,355 a year, and the term is from July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2023. Sharon Kishida currently serves in this grant fund position that was previously awarded from 2017 to 2020. The municipal assistant coordinator will provide technical assistance and support to municipalities in the North Shore area to increase recycling, composting, and reuse, reduce the toxicity of the waste stream, and foster regional cooperation and innovative approaches to waste reduction. MAS General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, requires both city council and mayor approval before any grant earmarked donation or gift to the city can be expended for their prescribed purpose. I therefore request the city council approve this grant by taking on this matter at your upcoming meeting. Thank you. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
Any questions or comments from members of the council before I ask for a motion to approve? Council Hausman?
Yes, is this the same kind of position that Sharon Kishida has been filling for us for a number of years in her, through her office at the library, or is this a different kind of position? I would ask Ms. Barrett and Mayor Cahill to respond to that.
I'll follow up. Ms. Barrett, you want to lead off?
Yes. To answer your question, Councilor Hausman, this is the position that Sharon Kishida has been in for, I believe, 20 years, and the position has been grant-funded through MAS DEP. It's a three-year grant-funded position that comes up for renewal every three years.
Okay, thank you. I thought so, but just want to confirm my understanding.
Yeah, I think Ms. Barrett said it well. I mean, I think that the region's well-served, and, you know, we houser in Beverly. You see that the grant funds pay the salary, and I, there's also the ability to step out of the contract as need be during the term of it, but I think we've all been really appreciative of the, of the work that Ms. Kishida does, both on our behalf and other communities. And so we're happy to request that we keep doing so. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor Cahill. Anybody else? Ms. Kent, a roll call vote, please, to approve. Oh, I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please. Ms. Kent?
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty? Flaherty?
Yes.
Flaherty's?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yeah.
Rotundo?
Yes.
and Guansey?
Yes. Next one, Ms. Kent?
Dear Honorable City Council, I am pleased to inform you that the city of Beverly has been awarded a $9,000 grant from the MAS Department of Transportation-Aeronautics to support ADA access into the building. This grant covers 100% of the project through MAS DOT Aeronautics with no matching funds required. This grant amount has been revised from the previous amount of $10,000 that was submitted to the council. MAS General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, requires both city council and mayor approval before any grant earmarked donation or a gift to the city can be expended for their prescribed purpose. I therefore request the city council approve this grant by taking action on this matter at your upcoming meeting. Thank you. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
And Mayor Cahill, quick question. That's access to the airport building.
My understanding, yes.
Okay. I know it says MAS Department of Transportation-Aeronautics, and then Ms. Bullion has CC'd on this, so thank you. I entertain a motion to approve and accept that grant.
So moved.
Second.
And a roll call, Ms. Kent, please.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty? Flowers?
Yes.
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
and Guansey?
Yes. Ms. Kent?
Just to let you know, Councilor, Flaherty has lost connection, so just to let you know.
So that carries eight to zero.
Dear Honorable City Council, regarding the Hale House preservation restriction to be held by the city of Beverly. Dear Honorable City Council, I am pleased to submit for you consideration and adoption of this amended preservation restriction for the Hale House at 39 Hale Street. This preservation restriction protects the aforementioned historic structure from the demolition, provides terms under which the structure may be maintained and altered, and ensures that any maintenance or alterations are completely with respect to the historic nature of the structure. The preservation restriction also ensures that any activity extending beyond maintenance and minor alterations to the structure as detailed by the restriction guidelines is done with approval from the city of Beverly, further ensuring the preservation of historical elements of the building. The preservation restriction is a condition of the Community Preservation Committee memorandum understanding with Historic Beverly for the funding work on the Hale House and Historic Landscape. A previous draft for the preservation restriction was approved by the city in Historic Beverly in December 2017. However, the Massachusetts Historical Commission determined that amendments were required before the document could be finalized and recorded at the Registry of Deeds. The tax documents result, several discussions, including Historic Beverly, the Massachusetts Historical Society, the Beverly Historical District Commission, and the Beverly Planning Department. The revised restriction has been updated to meet state standard and has been reviewed and approved by Historic Beverly, the Beverly Historical District Commission, and the MAS Historical Commission. In the state law, a preservation restriction is required to be signed by the grantor, Historic Beverly. The grantee, the city of Beverly, including the mayor, city council, and the Historical District Commission, and the Massachusetts Historical Commission, with the city council approval and adoption, the preservation restriction can be signed by all relevant parties to the document. Please see pages 11 through 5 of the document for signature pages. On May 28, 2020, the Beverly Historic District Commission voted four to zero to recommend approval of the preservation restriction to the Beverly City Council. The preservation restriction has also been approved and signed by the Beverly Historical Society. Includes within this letter is the preservation restriction for the Hale House and property at 39 Hale Street is recommended for approval by the Beverly Historic District Commission. Please contact the塑建设计 planner, Emily Hutchins, if you have any further questions. within this letter is the preservation restriction for the Hale House and property at 39 Hale Street is recommended for approval by the Beverly Historic District Commission. Please contact the塑建规划 planner Emily Hutchings if you have any further questions. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
Mayor Cahill, would it be okay if we sent this to committee and acted on it at our next meeting?
That's fine. Happy, happy to do that. Can I ask you just a quick favor?
Of course.
Do you mind if one of our planners, Emily Hutchings, who really ran point on this, is in reading? And if we could give her just a minute to, to give a quick explanation, and a minute for us to thank her for all her efforts. Our planning director, Darlene Winn, is with us as well, and Darlene and I both think it'd be, it'd be great if Emily could just have a minute of her time.
Of course. Ms. Hutchings, for being here.
Thank you for having me. So, yeah, this, this is a historic preservation restriction. It is, it effectively protects the Hale House from potential future development that is inappropriate and is not historically correct. And it requires any future alterations that are not listed specifically in the restriction guidelines as minor to be approved by the Historic District Commission. It is, it runs with the property, so this is something that will run into perpetuity. It does not expire at any time. It's something that was a condition of Community Preservation Act funding for the property. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
How about any questions for Ms. Hutchings? Is, I mean, I'm fairly comfortable. I went through most of the documents. I'm fairly comfortable asking for a motion to approve. So if I get that, we'll have a second discussion. And then I'm comfortable taking a vote. So I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Do we have a second? Anybody else have any questions or discussion on the issue? Well, hearing none, I will ask Ms. Kent to make a roll call vote to approve.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Matungo?
Yes.
And Guanxi?
Yes, that passes eight to zero. Ms. Hutchings, thank you. You have the, the full council has confidence in your work. Much appreciated.
Thank you very much.
I would entertain a motion to accept the late file on order number one fifty-two from Mayor Cahill.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Matungo?
Yes.
And Guanxi?
Yes.
Ms. Kent?
Dear Honorable City Council, I'm pleased to report that the City has been awarded an additional $8,000 of funding from the Massachusetts Historical Commission, MAS Preservation Projects Fund, grant program for the restoration of the Beverly Powderhouse. The City has previously been approved for a $55,000 grant for the Powderhouse restoration. Massachusetts Historical Commission approved the additional $8,000 to be awarded to the City of Beverly due to the availability of additional funds and the fact that Beverly Powderhouse restoration has maintained its timeline to have the majority of the work completed by June 30th, 2020, and the entire project completed by July 31st, 2020. The Beverly Powderhouse restoration is funded from a range of sources, including the MPPF grant from the MHC CPA funding, and an Essex Heritage Partnership Grant, and a donation from Beverly Crossing. The full restoration of the structure, including minor landscaping to better designate the area and facilitate future educational opportunities, is on schedule to be completed by July 31st, 2020. MAS General Law, 44, Section 53A, requires both City Council and mayor approval before any grant earmarked donation or gift to the city can be expected and expended for their prescribed purpose. Therefore, request the City Council approve this grant by taking action on this matter at your upcoming meeting. Thank you. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
Anytime I see anything about the Powderhouse, I think of former Beverly resident Lance Daly, who started the project. And it's so nice that even though he moved from Beverly to Texas, I'm sure that he's watching. So I would entertain a motion to approve and accept that, approve the mayor's request and accept the grant.
So moved.
Second.
And how about a roll call?
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Matungo?
Yes.
And Guanxi?
Yes. I would entertain a motion to accept the late file from Mayor Cahill on order number one fifty-three.
So moved. Second.
And a roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Matungo?
Yes.
And Guanxi?
Yes. And I'm going to give Ms. Kent a break, and I'm going to read this one. Dear Honorable City Council, I respectfully request your approval of a loan authorization to facilitate the ordering of a new ladder truck for the Beverly Fire Department. As you know, our frontline Quint truck is 11 years old, and backup Quint truck is turning 25 years old each year. As you remember, two years ago, we applied for a grant to pay for this new truck and were denied because even though the older Quint truck was over 20 years old, we were penalized for owning the newer Quint. We then made plans to seek a free cash appropriation from the City Council this spring after first having examined our reserved positions when the third quarter ended this past April. However, COVID-19 interrupted these plans. Most recently, we discussed seeking a free cash appropriation from the City Council upon free cash certification later this calendar year. However, in recognition that we should not ask too much more of our older Quint truck, we come before you tonight in hopes that with your approval of this loan authorization, we would be able to order the new ladder truck in July and receive delivery much sooner as a result. Approval of this request would allow us to legally order the vehicle, which typically takes up to a year to build and deliver. By the time of the delivery, we will have certified the June 30th, 2020 free cash, and will have those funds available to rescind the loan order and pay for the vehicle with free cash reserves. This method would allow us to order the truck up to five months sooner and ultimately avoid paying any borrowing costs. To this end, I respectfully request a loan order in the amount of 1.3 million to purchase the truck. Please initiate action on this request at your meeting this evening by setting a public hearing. The order must be published at least 10 days prior to the final passage, should be referred to the Committee on Finance and Property for a report thereon, and requires a public hearing. Where the order authorizes the issuance of bonds, it will require a two-thirds vote of the City Council. Attached to this communication is suggested loan authorization language. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor. Order that the City Council appropriates the sum of $1,300,000 to pay costs for the purchasing and equipping a new engine for the fire department, including the payment of all costs incidental related thereto. And to meet said appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the mayor, is authorized to borrow said sum under MAS General Law, Chapter 44, 7, 1, or any other enabling authority, and that the mayor is authorized to take any action necessary to carry out this project. Any premium received by the City upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this order, lest any such premium, or implied to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this order in accordance with MAS General Law, Chapter 44, 20, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount. The mayor is authorized to apply for or accept and expend any and all grants that may be available to the City to defray costs of this project. The amount authorized to be borrowed by this order shall be reduced to the extent of any grants received by the City on account of this project. I will entertain a motion to set a public hearing for this for July 13th, 2020, at 7:15 PM.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
And a roll call, please.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Matungo?
Yes.
And Guanxi?
Yes. Communication from other city offices and boards.
Order number 44 from the City Clerk's Office to renew all the petroleum licenses. List was attached to your agendas. We, because of COVID, we couldn't have the inspections through the fire department. So slowly, they're getting in, and I just didn't want to make them wait if during the summer they came through. I won't let them, you know, if they're not approved by the fire department, of course, I won't issue those.
Right. So I'll just briefly paraphrase your letter. All licenses have been expired due to COVID-19. The fire prevention officer has been out inspecting and will be sending me approvals as he does them. I will not approve any licenses without the fire inspections. Through the council going on summer break, I'm asking you to approve the attached list. Also, now the complete applications, if any of them, you would like to see them. City Council approval is needed. So I would entertain a motion to approve Ms. Kent's request.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Matungo?
Yes.
Guanxi?
Yes. Ms. Kent, 146.
Does a late file first? Late file number one?
All right. I would entertain a motion to accept the late file from Council Feldman, and then order number is 151.
So moved.
So moved.
Roll call, please.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Matungo?
Yes.
And Guanxi?
Yes.
Ms. Kent?
Yes, I'd like you to read that one.
Dear fellow council members, I would like to hereby reappoint, subject to your review and any recommendations, David Allen St. Pierre of 179 Dodge Street to represent Ward Five on the Open Space and Recreation Committee. His term would be effective until August 31st, 2023. Very truly yours, Kathleen Feldman, Ward Five Councilor.
I apologize to my councilors that I missed the chat. I have Councilor Ames, Councilor Feldman, and Councilor Flowers. What order did you want to comment on?
I think, I just wanted to say that I was really happy that the mayor put through the fire truck, but-
And we can all comment on that?
Same.
All right. Ms. Feldman?
Same thing.
And Ms. Flower?
I'm all good. Thank you.
All right, all good. Ms. Feldman, anything on your appointment, or can we just approve it?
If anyone has any questions about the appointment, that I'd be happy to answer them. He's been on the committee for several years, and there was actually just an article about him in the paper today, front page of the Salem News. So be happy to take questions, but I'm also happy to just vote on it.
Good time to reappoint. Any questions for Ms. Feldman? You never let a good volunteer get away. I entertain a motion to approve Council Feldman's request.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Wait, I can't do that.
Roll call, please.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Matungo?
Yes.
Guanxi?
Yes. Now, 146, Ms. Kent.
Order number 145 first?
Where's 145? I don't have that one.
Secondhand junk dealer's license by handwired rescue?
Yeah, I don't have that one. So why don't we do that one?
Okay. Dear Honorable City Council, attaches an application for a renewal of a secondhand dealer's license for handwired rescue at 6 Broadway.
Yeah, I saw that, but I don't know, maybe my printer, something happened to my printer.
Yeah.
It's a renewal. It's already been signed off on, so I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Matungo?
Yes.
Guanxi?
Yes. Now, 146?
Now, 146.
Thank you.
146 from the, it is for National Grid requesting-
Want me to read it?
Number 146 petition from National Grid Plan 29527209, replacing direct buried underground electric cables on Conant Street, and we need to set a public hearing, right?
I would entertain a motion to set a public hearing for Monday, July 13th, at 7:05 PM.
So moved.
So moved.
Roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Matungo?
Yes.
And Guanxi?
Yes. Ms. Kent, 147.
Order number 147 for a secondhand junk dealer license from Lena and Adian Gallery, 130 Capes Street, and it is a renewal.
Renewal, I will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Matungo?
Yes.
And Guanxi?
Yes. 148, please.
148. Order number 148 for hawkers and peddler's license with Joes on a roll, 61 Federal Street. Also, the chief, we just got this, is a last-minute thing, and the chief has not signed off on it, so it won't be approved until he does. But I just need to-
Refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs.
Order, want me to go on?
Yeah, please.
Order number 49 is a request for a hawkers and peddler's license from a fast food and casual, 112 Corning Street, and the same thing, we're waiting for the chief to issue it. But we do have Sue Gabriel here tonight to answer any questions, because it's also for the food truck as well.
Okay, so I would refer 149 and 150 to Legal Affairs, and we can get that from the chief. We can, we can approve those on the 6th. But Sue Gabriel has been very patient. We do have a public hearings scheduled for 7:15. So Sue, do you want to say a few words?
I can just give you a background on what we're applying for. We are applying for a, we are applying for a food truck, hawkers peddler's license for a food truck that will be a for-profit venture in order to raise more revenue to come back into the 501(c)(3) nonprofit. And it's going to be called Cheese Please, and it's going to be delicious and wonderful. So, any questions?
I know you have, you have a couple of really good people there that are going to run it for you. I know Ms. Beckman has been in the food business for a long time, and she sold her place a couple of years ago, and I don't know, for some reason, she wants to get back into it. So you do, you've put together a good team.
We have. And I promise, no steak and cheese, because there's only one place in town that makes awesome steak and cheese.
You're too kind. So would it be good if we take action on this on the 6th?
It would be wonderful.
Okay. Any questions for Sue? Sue, always good to see you.
Always good to see you, too. Thank you.
Back on the 6th, and we'll talk about it a little more, okay? Excellent. Okay, it is 7:15, and we have a public hearing scheduled, a pretty important one. We have a number of people that want to speak and make presentations, so I will ask Ms. Kent to read that order and call it over a public hearing. and call it over our public hearing.
Order number one-ten, notice of public hearing, Beverly City Council. Notice is hereby given that under the provision of Master and Lodge, Chapter Forty-A, Section Nine, Section three-hundred dash fifty-eight of the Beverly zoning ordinance, the Beverly City Council will hold a public hearing via remote participation on Monday, June twenty-nine, twenty twenty, at seven fifteen P M, relative to the city order number one-ten and special perm application to authorize the reuse of a municipal building for a project to include eighty-five affordable senior apartments, six live work studios, and approximately five-hundred-seat theater in supporting uses including non-conforming parking and signage. The applicant is Brisco Village LLC, here of Glofski and Glofski, of Eight Washington Street, Beverly. The property is located at Seventh Slier Road, is shown on Assessas Map thirty-one dash thirteen, and located in the RMD zoning district. The application and plans are on file with the Beverly City Clerk's Office and the Beverly Planning Department are available on the city's website for public review. Instructions to access the remote meeting will be provided on the meeting agenda and on the city website. Paul Guanci, President, and this was in the newspaper on June fifteenth and June twenty-second.
Thank you, Ms. Kent. Can I go to Council Flowers first before we begin?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to, uh, because of my, uh, day job at First Baptist Church and our connection with Harbor Lake Community Partners, recuse myself from this public hearing and subsequent vote.
Thank you, Council Flowers.
Thank you.
And we'll come get you somehow remotely when it's all done. Uh, Ms. Kent will send you a text or someone will, I'm sure. Uh, so before we go to the petitioner, I would ask, um, our planning director, Darlene Nguyen, uh, for a little brief introduction. Ms. Nguyen?
Yes, hi, thank you, everybody, um, and everyone involved. Um, as you are familiar, the Brisco Middle School was closed, um, and the city held a public process, uh, had a public process over one and a half to two years with a task force looking at potential reuse options of this, of Brisco, as well as some public meetings, uh, which helped us craft an RFP for the reuse, um, and eventual sale of the Brisco Middle School, um, for redevelopment. And that RFP was issued in June two thousand nineteen. We had four responses and ultimately selected, um, the petitioner who's on the public hearing for tonight, uh, with a, with a response that really very closely matched the priorities of the community that were expressed in the RFP, including preservation of the building, preservation of the theater, creation of affordable housing, and, um, live-work space. So, um, with that, you know, this is a, I typically staff the planning board and this is a process that the planning board typically reviews special permits, but in this case with the reuse of a municipal building, um, the city council is special permit granting authority here and, and you had previously referred the special permit review to the planning board for their review, as well as parking and traffic and the design review board, and you have all of those recommendation letters to you now. Um, and with that, I will hand it over or back to you or to the mayor, I'm not sure.
Thank you. Mayor Cale, do you want to say anything before we get rolling?
Um, I'll just say, you all know this project well. Uh, I think it's been a great process that, that led us to getting this, really this dream team of Harbor Lake Community Partners and Beacon Properties. Uh, we know how, you know, how desperately we need deeply affordable senior housing in Beverly. Uh, there are other some, some components, the artist's live-work opportunities, uh, the, the public opportunities to, um, uh, to hopefully in the future enjoy the, uh, the theater, uh, the public space that we're keeping title to for both the field behind the building and the, what they call the turf bowl, the, the green space in front of. And we're just really excited about everything that, that's happened to date, uh, about the work that we've been able to do with the team of Harbor Lake and Beacon on this and, and we're obviously in full and enthusiastic support of the special permit application before you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Cale. Um, and the last time we had to do something like this, it was with the McKay School. Uh, and I guess we have to thank Council Pat Grimes, who was a Ward Six Councillor for a couple of years, Councillor-at-Large, uh, back in the twenty-zeros, maybe around two thousand seven, two thousand and eight, who crafted this ordinance, um, with the concern that, uh, your elected officials should be concerned about the dispensation of, uh, public buildings. It worked with the McKay School, I look forward to it working here with the Brisco School. Um, so I'm going to go to Miranda Gooding, who is representing Glofski and Glofski, uh, works for Glofski and Glofski, representing and presenting, beginning the presentation on this proj, um, project. Ms. Gooding?
Thank you very much, Mr. President and, uh, members of the council. Uh, very pleased to be here this evening with the project team. Um, we're looking forward to presenting this project, which has been long in the making and is something that everybody is really quite, uh, proud to be a part of. Um, this evening, we will have, uh, in addition to, uh, myself, we will have Andrew DeFranza from Harbor Lake Community Partners, um, speaking on behalf of the project. Um, we will also have Thad Zamasco from SV Design, the project architect, speaking. Um, and we will also hear from Rebecca Brown, who is the traffic consultant with Greenman Peterson Incorporated. Um, and, uh, part of the project, uh, team, very important part of the project team here this evening, um, available for questions if needed. We have Darcy Jamison, who is, uh, on behalf of, uh, Beacon Communities, the partner with Harbor Lake Community Partners in the, uh, development venture, as well as April Ferraro from, uh, Meridian Associates, the civil engineers for the project. Um, our plan tonight is to provide highlights of, of really the very detailed information that the council has before it in its package, um, with, uh, key, key team members presenting their, their findings. Um, and following some preliminary matters, uh, from myself, Andrew DeFranza will, um, really be focusing on the program that is envisioned for the, the reuse of the building. Um, and he'll walk you through that. Thad will then go through the various design considerations, including what are pretty significant, uh, portions of this project, um, the historic rehab and the sustainability features. And, and that reminds me, while I'm talking for a minute, um, Thad Zamasco needs permission to share his screen with the council, if that's possible. We have the project slides that we can refer to as we, as we do the conversation.
Great.
Okay, um, and after Thad goes through the design, we'll wrap it up with Rebecca Brown giving, uh, just some brief highlights of the, the parking and traffic presentation.
Thank you. So now we're going to go to Andrew DeFranza?
No, I'm going to, I'm going to start you off once we get the, the, uh, presentation rolling, Mr. President, which should be just a moment here.
And you're going to continue?
I'm going to continue for just a little bit.
Okay.
Um, while this is loading, um, I can tell you that the applicant and the city went through a, uh, detailed purchase and sale agreement negotiation earlier in the spring and, uh, really did a lot of work to determine the configuration of this site. Um, I think that first screen, are, are we ready to share?
Here we go.
Okay, so, um, this first screen, I'm going to just call your attention to sort of four, um, four, four points. First of all, we start, obviously, within the middle of the site. This is the, uh, school building, which is being preserved and reused for housing. Um, along with that, there is accompanying, uh, site plan improvements, mainly to the parking and some of the, uh, resident amenities that we'll go through in more detail later. Um, if you go to the nose of the site, really, that you'll see the turf bowl is highlighted and you'll hear more about that this evening, but that is anticipated to be, uh, renovated, um, as well as, as the building. Um, and at the very tip of the turf bowl, um, you'll see a reference to a reconfigured intersection there, um, which is something that the applicant has worked out with the city to facilitate, um, something that's long been on, uh, Commissioner Mike Collins' wish list, which is an improvement of this particular intersection. Um, and our design has accommodated, uh, that improvement, which will take place on city-owned land and will be undertaken by the city, um, in, in a manner that is, uh, parallel to our project. Um, and then the last element is up at the top of the screen toward the north. You'll see a reference to an access drive, which, um, is actually on land that is going to be retained by the city, but this is a component that the applicant is, um, is undertaking as part of the project to provide, uh, a new access drive in part to our parking, but also to facilitate access to the city open space, um, which are the recreational soccer fields. And if you go to the next slide, Thad, that will become a little bit more apparent. Um, this slide really shows, this is a, a, what's called an A and R plan and it really shows the proposed, uh, division of the site into separate parcels with the main site in the middle, Lot B, being retained by the applicant. Um, and then Lot C is, uh, the playing field, what I'll call the playing field parcel, about two acres. There's a separate lot, which is going to be retained by the city as well for the access drive. Um, and you can see that we will be creating an access drive with a gravel turnaround to provide, uh, access to the, uh, recreational fields. Um, while I'm hitting on that parcel, I just want to make a quick note that part of the project envisions a set of, uh, reciprocal easements between the city and the applicant for the use of that shared access drive. Um, there will also be some easements, um, for some minor encroachments that reflect existing conditions that will be continued. And those will be before the council, um, on, on a future occasion. They are not part of this application, but while we're sitting here looking at the site, I just wanted to pass, uh, to pass that on to you and, and explain that we've worked hard to, um, think about some of these things early in the process. Um, I think, and then I, down at the very lower part, again, that's the nose, the triangle that's being retained by the city. The next slide, um, this just, as, as you know, as, as councillor Guanci mentioned in the beginning, uh, Section three-hundred-fifty-eight of the zoning ordinance provides, uh, for the special permit to authorize the residential reuse of a former building, um, in this case issued by the city council. Um, and our special permit request encompasses really four main items. Um, first of all, we're requesting a special permit to allow the, uh, mixed residential use as well as the, um, which, which consists of eighty-five affordable senior apartments, um, as well as six live-work studios and, um, as well as an approximately five-hundred-seat community theater, which will be in the, uh, restored existing auditorium. Uh, these uses in combination would not be allowed in the RMD district and the theater use would not be allowed, um, at all in the RMD zoning district, but for the special permit that we're seeking. Um, along with this, we're asking for, uh, three-dimensional, if you will, special permits. One is to, uh, request relief from the minimum lot area. Um, were we to comply with the lot area requirements for the district, we'd need about double the size of the, uh, approximately four-point-nine-acre site that is being retained. Um, and the special permit specifically authorizes, uh, the council to, uh, grant relief from, uh, that requirement in this case. Um, we are also asking relief for several things relating to parking. Um, in the RMD district, there is a straight two-space-per-unit requirement for all residential uses. Um, in this case, we anticipate that that would far exceed the actual, uh, requirement for these residents. Um, you'll see as we go on into the presentation, a fair number of these units are anticipated to be studio units with one-person occupancy, certainly do not see the, the need for, uh, two spaces. And in addition, we anticipate that, um, just owing to the, to the age of the residents and the fact that many of these units will be single occupancy, um, that the two-car-per-unit would, uh, vastly exceed what is needed. So we're requiring, we're requesting a special permit to reduce what is, uh, the required two spaces per unit to roughly one-point-seven spaces per unit, so a modest decrease in that, in that respect. Um, we also are trying to, uh, accommodate the, as much parking as possible on the site and are looking for some relief to allow parking in the front yard on Colan Street, um, where that would not otherwise be allowed. Um, and we are looking to really maintain the existing zero setbacks that exist on this parcel, um, for parking, which is, which is typically five feet from the property line. And finally, we're just asking the council to, uh, to allow for the project to have two, um, freestanding signs that would not otherwise be allowed without going to the zoning board of appeals, um, in this district because it's a residential district. Um, and in this case, we would still go back to the design review board for final approval to be sure that those signs are, um, in keeping with, with the city's requirements, but we're asking the council to bless that in advance. And with the next slide, um, in terms of what we, what we, uh, what the process envisions for this special permit request, um, we have already, uh, accomplished, uh, the review by the planning board, design review board, parking and traffic, uh, commission, all of which have unanimously approved or, and recommended, uh, approval of the application to the council and I, I know that you have your, their recommendations in your package. Um, we've also had our inclusionary housing application approved by the planning board and, um, and then the other things, the other two elements that are required for this are, are first of all, a, a finding by the council that we comply with the general, uh, requirements under the zoning ordinance, specifically Section three-hundred-ninety-one-B that apply to all special permits, that generally, uh, ensure that the project is not detrimental to the neighborhood. Um, and we have submitted, uh, through the planning department, uh, proposed findings in that regard, uh, that, as well as in our application for the council's consideration, demonstrating compliance with those criteria. And then the sort of, the hallmark, really, of this special permit is the requirement that at least twelve percent of the residential units in the, in the reuse of the building be permanently preserved for affordable housing. Um, and this project certainly meets that requirement, um, by a long stretch and actually exceeds a ninety-three percent of the proposed ninety-one residences. In this case, will be permanently restricted for low and, uh, affordable, um, excuse me, for low and moderately income households. Um, and that is a, a component of the project that all of us are, are very proud of and I can't think of a better segue, uh, to turn this over to Andrew DeFranza, uh, than affordable housing, which I, I know he would be delighted to sort of lodge in and explain the program in more detail.
I would agree. Thanks, Ms. Gooding. Uh, Mr. DeFranza, thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me, Mr. President, I appreciate it. Nice to be here from a rainy goat hill this evening. Ready to go?
It's all you.
Okay, thank you, everybody, uh, for having us, we really appreciate it, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, uh, Mr. President. So we have a few high water points here for you. We're starting with, at least in my opinion, the best one, um, which is, uh, affordable housing. So there are really three areas we tried to address in the RFP and in the permitting. And as, as Miranda suggested, the touchstone, the capstone, as it were, was the provision of affordable senior apartments. As you can see there, uh, the age restriction that's being proposed is fifty-five-plus, though we expect, uh, organically that the ages will be significantly higher than that. The bedroom breakdown, uh, you can see there under bullet number one. We do expect that, uh, programming here will have substantial levels of supportive services for those of you that are familiar with Turtle Creek and Turtle Woods and the service overlay that is there with our partners at Senior Care out of Gloucester. Uh, it would be a similar type of a program to that, so, uh, lots of provision for. So lots of provision for services for individual residents to maintain their independence as long as possible. We could get into discussing what those kinds of things might be if members of the council would like. We expect to pursue local preference with the state. As folks may know or recall, the maximum allowable parameters under the state regulations is 70%. And so we are proposing to ask for that. DHCD has the final authority over it, of course. But that will be asked for. I know a number of people have asked about that. And the income levels, which are the most important thing to me next to the services, are going to be 30% of AMI and 60% of AMI. So as Miranda said, there are 91 units here, 85 of them are age-restricted. Of 85 age-restricted units, all of them will be affordable. 80% is the requirement under the regulation locally, but these units will be affordable at levels of 60% and 30%, as you see here. The 30% units, for folks that are curious, would, we hope, have associated project-based rental vouchers, which is very similar to the experience people have at Turtle Creek and Turtle Woods, where the rent is based on their income. Those are going to be your most economically vulnerable folks. So you'll see here what the income limits are. As the bullets or as the italicized areas will show you, there is variation depending on the volume of people. So if you have a couple, the income limit is slightly higher. But the greatest news of this whole thing is that the Briscoe School gets to provide 85 affordable senior units long-term for the community, and it's something that we really need, especially situated in the context of the great work everybody on this call has been doing together over recent years to provide family housing and individual housing. And this is really a significant advancement in providing housing for our seniors in the community. There are two other major areas related to the project use. So we were trying, when we made the response, to not make the building any bigger or any smaller. Building had to stay the same size, to lead with affordable senior housing, which we did with 85 units. But we also had two or three other things we were trying to achieve based on the community meetings. One of those is that we wanted to honor deeply the historic use of the building. Almost 100-years-old center of community life for generations. With many of you, we've had endless numbers of people talk about who in their family went to school there, where they went to school. And we fully expect there'll be residents who end up living in a classroom where they had class, which is very exciting. But we also wanted to, as a part of the historic renovation, that is going to include all manner of preservation of detailed elements that that'll get into later. But the real gem of it was to preserve the theater. And so we committed to preserving the theater, approximately 500 seats, which is roughly the first floor. The upper floor will be restored, but not used actively as theater space. And we have a few different theater providers that we're talking to and interested in. As you might imagine, in the current climate, the local theaters are having a not-so-easy time. And we expect that conversation about who the operator will be will be a number of months out before that can be a really vibrant conversation. But the historic preservation of the site is the second capstone of the project, and that will really restore the use and glow of the site and salute its 100-years-worth of history as we steward it into the future of its use for the community. It is a historic tax credit financed project, for those who might be curious about that. And so that will even raise the bar further as to what kinds of things need to be preserved inside and outside of the building. We did, as a third element, there was a number of folks interested in the artistic, possible artistic use of the site. And so in the rear of the site, we did add six live-work studios that will have a preference for artists. It's important to note on those units that there's not an age restriction and there's not an income restriction. So when Miranda said it was 93% of the total, this is where the 7% comes in. So 85 senior affordable units, six live-work studios with a preference for artists, not income-restricted, not age-restricted. But that's a salute to the artistic community, which is so vibrant in Beverly, and folks who are interested in the use of the building in that way. The final element was open space. So we wanted to add affordable housing. We wanted to historically preserve the building. We wanted to give a salute to the artist community, and we wanted to preserve the open space. Primarily, that meant preserve the front of the building, the triangle area, and the rear of the building where the soccer field was. So this project allows us to restore the Turf Bowl, which is how the front is referred to, to a level maybe not heretofore seen. And so it will have all manner of amenities. The landscaping will get restored. There'll be new plantings, areas to walk, sitting areas, a very nice interaction with the front of the building, particularly where folks might be entering for theater access. So some space there for people to be in overflow. We're very excited about that. I think it will enliven that space in a way that probably none of us have seen and certainly be a little different than what we're used to seeing in that space. It'll also, additionally, we will be preserving the soccer field to the rear. So that will be restoring that soccer field. We'll also be adding some modest dedicated parking for the soccer field itself. So as families are back there and needing to use that, they'll have access to that through a little stub of a road, and there'll be some parking to the rear. So those were our essentially three big areas, and then the artist studios, the fourth. There are a number of other side benefits to it, as you can see on the slide. I think it's going to make for an amazing interaction and integration between the intergenerational play, between the elderly residents who live there, the theater-goers, kids playing soccer in the rear, should be an incredible way to enliven and rejuvenate the site and really restore it while respecting its historic use, restore it and push it forward into a way that it's going to be able to serve everybody for another 100 years. In my world, of course, we could fill 85 units of senior housing all day, every day, for a long time to come and not crack the need. And so that's no secret to anybody. That's my core driver and motive here. But as a Beverly person, I'm really delighted to see the improvement on the landscaping, the revenue on the taxes, certainly the employment opportunities, the interaction between the different uses, I think, is incredible. There's also some interesting environmental angles to the project. It's proposed to be lead silver. And there's areas that are going to be redefined along Sawyer Road and Colan Street with nice integrated sidewalks and tree lines that we haven't had before that'll be both safer, more enjoyable for the community and for the residents. So it sort of goes on and on. And it's certainly an amazing, amazing piece of integrated activity. And I'm delighted to be a part of it and honored, we all are, to help steward Briscoe School into its next century of service. And we're excited to see this many layers of activity and wins come together, though, as you might imagine, it's not difficult to be able to stitch all of those things into one piece. But we're doing it. It's an amazing team we have, and they're doing a wonderful job. And we really would like to express to the council, the mayor, and the community at large how delighted and privileged we feel to be given this responsibility to restore the school and bring it into its next generation. So thank you to everybody for allowing us to do that. We're very grateful. Happy to take questions or pass it back to Thad to talk about the design.
Well, do I have a question? Larry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a few questions. One is how many jobs will this bring about for this Briscoe project?
Thanks, Counselor Flaherty. You mean construction jobs or ongoing management jobs?
Maybe some permanent jobs. I mean, is there, it's going to be, you know, people taking care of the property and things like that? Or will you just kind of use existing people?
No, definitely you'd need new people for that. So you're probably on the property management side, around a half a dozen. And then on the theater side, I couldn't tell you how many there are. That's not our end. We would know better when we know who the individuals are. So I think what you'll see is a big spike in construction jobs for, you know, a 12- to 24-month period, and then it'll shift into operations. So you'll have a couple of property managers, some service coordinators, some maintenance staff. There'll also be people there that are servicing the residents of the building that are not employed by the site. So, for example, at Turtle Creek and Turtle Woods, I have about six or seven that work for Harbor Light. But then there are generally another half a dozen that are working for other service providers that are providing care to those individuals, maybe more than that if you count transportation and the like. That would be my best guess at this point.
And, Mr. President, just a couple of quick questions, if you don't mind.
Please, of course.
So the average AMI, you were talking between 30% and 60%. Do you see it going more towards a 50%? How do you work that out financially? Because obviously you can't survive if they're all 30%, correct?
Yeah, almost. That's actually really, it's a good question. So as opposed, I wouldn't say between 30% and 60%. I would say they're set at two tiers. So you have one tier that's under 30%, which I would consider to be generally individuals on social security. Most exclusively, that would be very akin to some of our buildings. And one tier at 60%. So there's not an intra-tier between them, though you may have people in that tier. And you're absolutely correct. The only way to do 30% units is if there are project-based rental vouchers attributable to them. So our expectation at this point is that there will be 16 of those. So that's a fixed number and directly correlated to the amount of vouchers that are in place. You could not do, no one can do a 30% unit without a voucher. That's essentially mathematically impossible.
Good. Thank you. And I'd just, I'd like to add 55 and older kind of zoning we were trying to do for a while. I think that's a good idea. A couple of questions regarding history. I like how you talked about the history of the building. Is there anything, besides the structure of the building? I didn't hear, is there anything going to be in a plaque or anything written down to talk about the history? And then two other quick questions. Visitor parking for the 500-seat auditorium and having, when we do hopefully have some nice events there, and have an adequate parking. And then the third and final one, is there irrigation on the soccer field?
Yeah, so the three questions that are there, parking and irrigation were second and third. And I'm sorry, your first one again, Counselor.
The history, the plaque.
The history, yes. Yeah, so we've been through the building at some length and with this and the expectation is there's, as you would know, there are, there's an abundance of items inside the building that we would like to take and preserve, restore, and feature. So our expectation is there will be quite a wide variety of photos and featured items that are inside the building now that will be demonstrated, as well as certain kinds of certain kinds of plaques that are already in the main foyer that would probably remain there. There's also stuff outside. Commissioner Collins has pointed out to us some areas outside where there are already historic markers that would be kept. So our expectation is there'll be an extensive amount of marking in salute to history, both in terms of photographs and plaques and actual items, maybe not so dissimilar to what we've seen in Cummings when they have featured elements that are used. To your question about parking, I think I'm going to hold that if that's okay. They do have the parking consultant on the line, and that's going to go through the whole layout. There is parking on-site for the theater itself, as well as the parking adjacent to the building across the street where the teachers historically had parked. And so there's a number of areas where that parking is expected to be. And irrigation on the field, I believe the answer is no at this point. But somebody can correct me if I'm wrong about that. So there's not, I don't believe there is irrigation now. The field restored, but I do not believe there is added irrigation at that point. Is that right?
Good, thank you.
Okay. I think I got the three.
Yeah, I know. A lot of questions, so thank you.
No, that's great. That's great.
Good questions.
Yeah.
Now we're going to go to Mr. Samasco.
Yes, can you hear me okay, please?
I can.
Okay, good. I just want to give you a quick tour of the project. I think Andrew explained well how proud we all are as I am as a Beverly resident and business owner to be involved in. We found, as we did our research in the slide here, the original elevation, the architect did of the building, and some historic photo of the rear. And it's amazing that the city invested so well and so wisely back in the '20s that the building pretty much exists in the same form today, in pretty good shape. It needs some building systems, but the general structure's in good shape. It's a good, solid building that lends itself well to this use. Even the original brochure photos, when they opened the building up top here in black and white, when you put them against the photos of the building now, you can see it's held up very well. It has some really great features that we're polishing and celebrating as opposed to removing in the most part. So as was mentioned, the site is divided into three parts. There's the city open space where the little kids played soccer, at least when I had parents, when I had a parent of little kids. There's what is called the Turf Bowl, which is not our invention. That was what it was called on the original drawings, which is that front lawn area. And then last, there's the site where the building sits in the parking. And our goal was to first organize the site for vehicular movement, bicycle movement, and pedestrian movement, and avoid as much as possible, you know, conflicts in those. There is a fair amount of parking, but it's well-screened from the neighbors on Sawyer Road. There are, there's a well-planted parking island separating the parking areas. Something like 150 trees are being added to the site here. As Andrew mentioned, the building is not being added to in any way. It's just being worked with. There is at the back corner near that access drive a small maintenance shed where we can store some snow blowers and lawn mowers, things with some gasoline that you'd rather not have in the building, as well as a little bit of a work yard in that area. Generally, the site circulation is what's there now, where you can come in off of Colan Street in this case, and have a drop-off area for the theater. And this is the front door of the theater where there's an overlook into the Turf Bowl, and you can come out. Parking on this side of the building is largely for residents, as well as this parking on this side on Sawyer Road, closest to the building. And then out here is really where we expect the overflow parking to be, the parking for the auditorium to go. And it was mentioned, there's some shared spaces out here in this far corner that relate to the field. The original building had its loading and unpacking area right in this position here. We were able to actually reuse that same idea. Our trash is all sort of in the building and comes out of this area here. Gets picked up for delivery. The old locker rooms, for those who went to the school and enjoyed those wonderful locker rooms, are being converted into the live-work, artist-preference apartments. And the old gym is being converted into the residential community space, you know, fitness rooms, community gathering rooms, and so forth. And in the middle is, in fact, as you remember, the auditorium with its main entrance being preserved. The building will be made fully accessible. We have a new, the stairways in the building stay where they are. We'll be adding a ramp here to get into. This is our main residential entrance, as well as the ramp that is already there now for access to the auditorium. So the site is well, gets well-defined, well by the landscape and by how the uses are divided. We are adding a bus shelter in this position here for the MBTA buses as it comes by. And then this really nice turf bowl area, as was mentioned before, is a nice kind of park area. A typical floor plan, if you've been in the building, it's kind of a pentagon where you kind of go around. It's a little easy to get lost in, honestly. It works out perfectly. The classrooms become one-bedroom apartments or studios, pretty much. The really cool hallways with the natural wood and the transoms all stay very wide and generous hallways, which is shown here in yellow. The stairways stay as well. And then this aqua color here is the auditorium, which we've been able to separate out from the building as an independent use with the back part of the building here for servicing the theater being preserved. As I mentioned earlier, this area here is the, on the ground level of the gymnasium is the common use spaces for the residents with a nice little accessway out to some outdoor spaces, which I'll show you in a minute. So again, the building is essentially being used without too many changes to the actual form or the structure of it, just kind of working with its natural characteristics. On the outside, the biggest thing we're doing is replacing the windows with some really good, energy-efficient, and historically correct windows. Same for the doors. The doors over the years have been changed. We're going to put in some new doors that will meet the historic standards. There were some places, most of these stairways on the sides did not have handrails. We'll be adding handrails. But generally speaking, we'll be cleaning the building, but it will look, it'll look nice and bright and clean and like it looked 100-years ago when it was open. Off the backside here, you might note now that up in these transom windows in the gymnasium has been filled in with plywood over the years. Those will be, the plywood will be removed. And historic windows we put in up high here, serving those community spaces. The artist's residents are down in here. The artists', uh, residents are down in here. Uh, we'll be, we'll be adding some doorways. But generally speaking, the view of the building will be pretty much unchanged from what it was, uh, originally designed to be, to be seen as. We are doing a, uh, Department of Interior, uh, standards for historic preservation, quality restoration, which means every detail is being looked at. Uh, in this case, we'll show you just the window where the mountain bar, the, the dividing bars, the sash lifts and all of that will comply with and look like the historic buildings while also being energy efficient. We have a really great historic consultant named McRusty, who has been advising us and running this through the Park Service, uh, and getting us, uh, hopefully getting us the tax credits we need. I encourage you, um, to look at the building closely. The details that the city, uh, invested in years ago are still there. I admit, as much as I've walked around this building over the years, I had not focused on them so much. Some really great details that I'd encourage you to, uh, when you're by the building, to take a look at. Everything you can imagine was, was thought of, including some, uh, monumental plaques and so forth, as I mentioned earlier. In terms of sustainability, uh, we are, are working with a consultant called New Ecology, who are, who are experts in sustainability. We are targeting at a minimum a LEED Silver Certification. Uh, we will be providing electrical vehicle charging stations with expansions for more, uh, focus on recycling and composting, uh, a really state-of-the-art stormwater management system, focus on the bicycle and pedestrian amenities and their connections, uh, victory gardens being added and, and focus on, uh, healthy home indoor air quality. You know, all, all of the good things that you would, uh, think can happen and should happen, uh, are being incorporated into this building design. A quick look at a little bit of the detail coming off the back of the building, some of the outside site amenities as you, as you leave the community space to go outside. We've created an outdoor room here with a lawn and a terrace, outdoor seating, uh, a place to walk your dog, hopefully a view over to the kids, to the kids, um, hanging out in the soccer field, the victory gardens, as was mentioned. Really nice walking sight, uh, and, and good delineation of the uses, I think. Out front, as mentioned before, um, there are places, uh, where there are plenty of benches, uh, it's well lit. Uh, there are bike racks, uh, there's a couple of signs, as was mentioned earlier, here and here to, to help folks find the project. There are some really large trees that will be saved, uh, that are, is part of the landscape design. And out on this point, as was mentioned, we're allowing for the ability to have that intersection be more of a, of a, uh, nine-degree T. Uh, there are some places, there's some picnic tables and some places for art, uh, designated on this, on this turf bowl site. Well, folks coming to the building will be, can come here and get dropped off and picked up, you know, Lyft and Uber, taxi, that kind of thing, small buses, that kind of thing. But we'd expect even during an intermission of an event that this area in here could be sort of an outdoor area to sit, to look out over this turf bowl, to sit down slightly, uh, from that area. It should be a really nice way to frame the front of the building, but also a very nice space, uh, to, to just relax and enjoy, um, the city of Beverly from. Um, civil engineering, April is here from Meridian. If you need detailed, um, answers from her, but basically, this was mentioned before, the site's been completely organized now and so that all the various uses are well defined. Uh, the, the city has ample connections available to the site, as you'd expect. The stormwater management is going to be upgraded to a DEP best practice, uh, standard. We're, right now, there, that does not really happen. And then last, the engineering department has issued some comments, which we've received and we will comply with. Um, the fire department had some comments regarding some fire truck turning, uh, and we've demonstrated that that all can work now. And they asked for a new, uh, fire hydrant, which of course we will provide. And I think with that, I'll turn it over to Rebecca, who can talk through some of the parking traffic highlights and then we'll be ready for some questions.
Great, Ms. Brown?
Sorry, the little bar kept disappearing on me to unmute. I'm Rebecca Brown with Greenman Peterson. Um, and I'm just gonna kind of highlight to you a few of the key points on the traffic study. And then if there's more detailed questions that you have, um, I can certainly answer those for you. Um, but as you are aware, we have already been through Parking and Traffic Commission, um, for their review as well as, um, Planning Board. And they also provided a recommendation, um, with some improvements that they had requested, um, from the Planning Board. So overall, this project, it's expected to generate on a daily basis about three hundred to four hundred and forty, um, daily trips. And because of the, um, residential use of the building and it being a senior housing development, it's a significant reduction in the amount of traffic that's being generated as compared to the previous use as a middle school. Um, so it's about seventeen hundred to twenty-three hundred fewer trips per day, um, than the middle school was generating. Um, even when you compare it to an event day at the theater, um, the previous theater had about twelve hundred seats in it. The proposed theater will have about five hundred seats in it. Um, so even on an event day, it's still significantly fewer trips than what was previously generated by the middle school use. Um, there is adequate parking supply for the proposed use. So there will be a total of, um, a hundred and fifty-six residential parking spaces that will be, um, available on the site. That is a ratio of, um, one point seven approximately, um, spaces per unit. I know that, um, zoning requires two point oh parking spaces per unit. But when we looked at Institute of Transportation Engineers or ITE data, um, for a similar use, um, they actually recommend one point four seven per unit. So, um, a total of a hundred and forty-nine parking spaces is what they would recommend. So the hundred and fifty-six is adequate, um, to be able to accommodate, um, the demand that's estimated for a similar type of use. Obviously, the city's zoning is based on all residential and not specific to a senior housing development. Um, there are also seventy-eight parking spaces that will be provided onsite for the use of the theater. Um, based on the zoning regulations, one parking space per, um, four seats is required. So that would be a total of a hundred and twenty-five spaces that would be needed. Um, so seventy-eight of those can be accommodated directly on the site. And then the forty-seven remaining parking, um, or vehicles would be accommodated nearby in a number of locations. So right on Colon Street, directly opposite, um, the building, the MBTA operates sixty-seven parking spaces that are heavily underutilized. Um, they're very rarely used, that would be available, um, for public use, that, um, patrons of the theater could park in those sixty-seven parking spaces. That alone would be able to accommodate the overflow from the site. But there are also an additional twenty, um, parking spaces, parallel parking spaces along the northerly side of, um, Colon Street that are within the five hundred foot radius that, um, is allowed by zoning, that also could be used for overflow parking. And in the event that there was parking, that if there was particularly a large event one day that needed additional parking, there are an additional eighty-seven parking spaces, um, right across from the Beverly Council on Aging, um, that are just a short distance to the east that could also be used for some overflow parking, um, if it were ever to be needed. Um, based on the meetings that we had with Parking and Traffic Commission, um, there were a number of items that were identified as part of our traffic study, um, and recommendations with the Parking and Traffic Commission. One of those was for some continued monitoring, um, after things kind of regulate again, uh, following post-COVID nineteen, um, to look at the intersection of Colon Street and Brimble Avenue. That's an intersection that's been a long consideration, um, by the city for whether or not it needs a traffic signal or some other type of improvements there. Um, so to look at that, um, post-COVID nineteen restrictions being lifted, to see, um, what might be needed that, at that intersection. And then also some monitoring of the Route One A intersection with, um, Colon Street and Cabot Street, um, to be able to adjust those signal timings if needed to account for, um, traffic from this development. Um, one of the areas that we did note that signal timing modifications are needed are at the Sawyer Road and Herrick Street intersection. Right now, that intersection is operating, um, pre-timed. Um, and we had some recommendations for changing those, those timings so that it's running time of day plans, um, to be able to accommodate fluctuations in the direction of traffic to and from the highway at that intersection. Um, the items that were committed to by the applicant and were spelled out in the recommendations from Parking and Traffic Commission and Planning Board were for some pedestrian enhancements all along the site. So new sidewalks are being constructed, um, all along Sawyer Road, along the site frontage and along Colon Street as well. Um, there are new sidewalks and pathways through the, the area that's known as the, the turf bowl. Um, so there are some pretty significant pedestrian enhancements that are proposed, um, along Sawyer Road and Colon Street in the area. Um, we've also proposed implementing a transportation demand management program, which in addition to the sidewalk construction would include the, um, bus shelters that were mentioned, um, along Sawyer Road at the bus stop there, um, bicycle racks, um, both outside of the building as well as a bicycle storage room inside of the building. Um, the recreation areas that will be provided onsite, um, a partnership with the local TMO to be able to, um, monitor and identify additional measures for, um, transportation demand management, providing residents with information on transit services in the area so that they can make the best use of them and having these available, um, onsite as well. Um, it would be part of their orientation package when they move in. Um, and also providing EV stations, electric vehicle charging stations on the site as well. Um, as that also alluded to, there are some geometric improvements for the Sawyer Road and Colon Street intersection. Um, it's our understanding that the city is looking at a project to realign Sawyer Road, um, to come into Colon Street at more of a T intersection. So the site has been designed to be able to accommodate that, um, with the layout of the turf bowl and the sidewalks, um, that are proposed so that that can be accommodated as part of the project. Um, also, a wayfinding signage will be developed, um, to direct people to the parking onsite for the theater as well as overflow parking in the avail, in the surrounding area. Um, we have developed a template with the Parking and Traffic Commission for what that signage could look like. Um, but because there is not a theater tenant at the time or a theater operator at the time, um, we agreed to return to the Parking and Traffic Commission to develop a more elaborate traffic and parking control plan that will finalize that wayfinding signage once an operator has been identified. Um, and with that, I'll turn it back over to Miranda, um, for any closing remarks before we open it up for questions.
Ms. Gooding. Thank you, Rebecca.
Thank you.
Ms. Gooding, you might have been checked, uh, knocked off. Um, I see Counselor Rotundo, you have a question or a comment?
Uh, question, actually, a couple of them, if I may, thank you.
Who are you directing to? Miranda is, uh, knocked off the meeting.
So I think it's actually more towards parking and maybe a general question towards maybe even the mayor or Darlene for that matter. So the question regards to the parking along the right away of the train sta, uh, train tracks. I know it was mentioned the sixty-seven spaces. I also know in the past that many years back it was leased out to a used car dealership. So I just was wondering if the city has an agreement for a long-term, um, for the parking spaces. I know we've been, as a city, using it for the, uh, Frisco Middle School, especially when the two schools were combined. That was the biggest concern, was parking with all the, um, increased traffic. And then the other question was in regards to the freestanding sign. I know there's no conceptual drawings yet, but do we have any idea of how large these signs may be in that area where it is sort of in a residential area?
I, I can speak to the sign size if you'd like, uh, and, or wait, uh, let the first question get answered. Sounds like that might be a mayor's question.
Um, Mayor Caneo, about the parking spaces. Is that your question, Counsel Rotundo?
That was my first one, yes. Just if we had a long-term, um, agreement with the T where it's, uh, controlled by the T, from my understanding, the sixty-seven spaces.
Counselor, thanks for the question. I, I may have to get back to you a little bit on that. Um, I would say that we've been using those spaces for, as you know, quite a number of years. Um, not sure, I'm not sure that the, um, MBTA ultimately claims them. Um, so I know I've had that conversation with Commissioner Collins on a number of occasions. I've got to text out to him right now because as you were asking your question, I was saying, you're stumping me. And so, uh, let, let me see if I can get back to you in the next few minutes.
Mayor, I asked him, this is Darlene, I asked him that question earlier. Uh, they did speak to Counsel Rotundo earlier. Um, his comment, his response to me was, it is our property.
Do we know that for sure, though? I know that's what Com, Commissioner Collins is saying, but I'm also just, the presentation has claimed it's sixty-seven spaces that are the T. So I just want to make sure there's clarification on that. Again, I'm all for the project. It's just making sure, I know parking's always been an issue throughout the city. And we did claim those and made arrangements with the T prior years. And also, like I said, I know years ago, it was once upon a time a used car dealership in that space. So again, I just wanted to just make sure that we do have some sort of agreement if it isn't ours.
Okay. And you had a question for Mr. Samasco?
I, I think the question regarding the sign, um, you know, Beacon, uh, Communities, uh, does a really great job on branding their properties and, uh, in a very tasteful way. I would expect the sign would be something in the range of, you know, four feet by six feet each one, mostly for, so folks coming to the property kind of know where they should enter, uh, and, and that they've arrived. Uh, over the main doorway at the Colony, uh, portico is, we're going to, um, find a picture of it. We are going to keep a sign up in here, uh, but the two sign, the two monument signs will be relatively modest, just enough for folks to identify that they've arrived, you know, at the project site. We would not see anything high, would see something more ground-mounted with a, you know, low level of illumination. Uh, you know, tasteful, uh, and relatively modest. And we are going to the Design Review Board, uh, with, uh, our proposed sign once, once we develop kind of the branding for the project.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rotundo. I'll go to Counsel Flaherty, please.
Yes, a general question, um, I might have missed it, but did you talk about trash and recycling? And maybe where the loading dock would be?
Yeah, I, I can answer that. So there will be within the building, uh, trash chutes, recycling chute, uh, separate from the, from garbage chute at each floor, adjacent to the elevator, if you know where the elevator was in the building from maybe your years there. And that goes down into a corner area here that used to be, I think it might have been the metal shop. But it's the shop area that's going to become the shop and maintenance area for the building. There'll be a trash room down there, you can imagine with a hose and a drain. Uh, and it's a compacted system, so compacted containers would get, would be taken out and rolled out to this area here and picked up. So all of the trash would be, uh, generated by the residents would be, would be kept inside the building until the day of pickup. Out here in the maintenance area, we have a dumpster for sort of the, the things that kind of get left behind. Some, you know, construction materials, maybe someone moves out and leaves a little bit of furniture behind. Uh, dry, you know, if you will, dry type, uh, uh, refuse, not, not garbage or resident trash. But generally, uh, all of the, again, all of the trash generated would be, uh, and compost even would be coming out of here uh, in the, in what was, as I mentioned earlier, kind of the original loading and unpacking, uh, part of the building.
All good, Flaherty?
Thank you.
Um, Ms. Gooding, did you rejoin us? No, okay, so we'll keep asking questions. I thought that Miranda could have wrapped things up for us. Um, Counsel Haussmann?
Sure, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, yeah, I just have some, uh, well, a very general comment that this is such an exciting, uh, project with so many fantastic, uh, you know, positive attributes for the city. You know, I think the, 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 the. You know, I think the proposal and the team have pulled together a really terrific project for us to consider as the council. Having said that, after a year or two on the Zoning Board of Appeals, I sort of do have a sort of a drill down on a couple of different details that I guess I can't get out of my system after 16 years, looking at special permit applications. Is Rebecca Brown still with us?
I am, yes.
So a quick question, Rebecca, just on the lights at the corner of Herrick and Sawyer. Your use of terminology wasn't familiar with pre-timed lights now versus what they're going to be or so forth. Can you just elaborate a little bit of what that means and what is being proposed as a change?
Sure, yep. So normally there are loops in the road, which are sensors that tell the intersection whether or not there are vehicles waiting on each approach. There was some work that was done a number of years ago, I think it was three years ago now, for some gas line repairs in the area. And when that work was done, the signal loops were cut. So the signal right now is unable to tell if anyone is actually there. So it's running a predetermined set of timings that runs 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Right now, the city is in the process of chasing down the gas company to get those loops repaired. And we agreed to provide them with a timing plan for some timings that they can implement at that intersection that would be time-of-day based, once they get those loops repaired from the gas company. So that would allow traffic coming southbound up Sawyer Road in the evening when everyone's coming home to get more green time, but then headed northbound towards the highway in the morning would be able to get more green time in the morning. So that it could really accommodate fluctuations in traffic through that intersection.
Yeah, I have a high degree of confidence in Eric Barber and Mr. Collins that they will chase down the gas company for assistance on those points.
Yeah, so we've been told they're trying very hard.
And is there any kind of signalization that addresses, because that's right by the hospital, that addresses, you know, emergency vehicles getting through the lights, or they just rely on their own vehicle lights to get through without issue?
You know what, I'm not sure if there is preemption at that intersection. I can check if you give me one second.
It seems like if we're going through the effort of, you know, trying to bring this up to, you know, up to snuff, that that would be a useful feature to incorporate in the lighting, if it's not already.
Absolutely. There is preemption equipment there, whether or not it's working right now, if it was damaged at all as part of that gas line work, but there is equipment there today.
So, yeah, I don't know who this gets properly directed to, but just sort of as a book note, maybe to Darlene Wynn to sort of chase that down, follow up on that. Another thing is, you know, typically, you know, the Planning Board or the Zoning Board has plans in front of them that are already vetted and recommended before they, you know, when they make their decision. So I just have a couple of sort of design questions. One, I'm curious about the theater and what the depth of the theater is and what kind of activities, given the depth of the sort of stage, what kind of productions might be contemplated there? I know this is a very much a detail-oriented question, but if you know the answer, it'd be great to hear.
Yeah, this is. No, go ahead, Andrew, if you'd like. Sure, thanks for the good question, Council Hausmann. I think the short answer is we don't know yet, especially with the expectation was that it would be something akin to, you know, to the Cabot in its use, but probably with more capacity for some live theater. So I think our expectation was they would be able to have live music venues, live theatrical venues. I think in some ways, the larger question is what are theaters going to be doing in the near term and what's going to be viable for them in the next few years? I think that's, we're much more anxious about that variable than physicality.
Yeah, fair enough. I mean, I certainly learned through a previous experience that the depth of the stage can affect what, you know, what kind of productions go there. So I was just curious.
Yeah, Thad may have a better sense of what the actual depth is in terms of your question about what were we imagining the uses would be. You know, I think we're thinking it could be, like I said, music, comedy, theater. That was our expectation, but I don't know the depth itself.
Yeah, I mean, I would only add, I mean, I think the stage is kind of Cabot-like in size, so anything that you might have seen at the Cabot could be performed there, but probably not much more. What it does have is this backstage area, which is kind of, you know, the old cafeteria area, that can help provide for maybe more of a theatrical-type performance than, let's say, that the Cabot could do.
Okay, thank you, yeah. It's not so much a special permit as a curiosity question, I suppose.
Yeah.
More special permit-oriented question. The monument signs, six by four, sounds about the right size, but we don't have any, I don't know, can you provide locations and materials that are being contemplated for them?
Yeah, I can provide locations at a minimum, which are this location here, basically the two ends, the two points that kind of mark.
Okay.
The project. I would expect that they're ground-mounted, so, you know, they're not up in the air, that the typical kind of ground-mounted sign, you know, left to my own devices, it's probably a cast stone kind of thing with a little brick and then some metal letters. But Beacon Communities has expertise in, you know, in branding and would probably work with Harbor Light on a particular, you know, fine design that relates to the kind of the branding of the project, which is called, you know, Brisco Village for Living in the Arts. So I imagine the BLVA might fit in that design somehow. It's a little difficult, also not knowing who might be in the auditorium, to know whether they might be noted on that sign or not. I know the wayfinding was largely related for Parking and Traffic, it's largely related to the having folks find the auditorium and the auditorium's parking might be coming from, you know, a bit of a distance.
Yeah. The, and I forget, just when you, you would probably know the name off the top of your head, but we're a, I know Mr. Collins is big on this as am I, we're what, a night sky community where the, so the lighting.
Dark sky.
Sorry, yeah, so the lighting on the monument sign would be pointed down, I assume, not up?
Yeah, yes, sorry, Council Hausmann, yeah. All of the lighting on the site is dark sky compliant. So while the paths are lit and the lots are lit, they are all lit with a dark sky compliant lighting, which is basically directing the light down and not up. There is, I will admit, there's one exception, which is there are two cast iron globes on the front of the building, which we're restoring. I imagine we can blacken out the top of the globe, but we want to make, the historic preservation folks will want to make sure that those fixtures look like they did in the 1920s.
Sure, so to a degree, you know, compliance with that would be good. So the DRB recommendation letter, the applicant says it will consider and it will review the two comments. So I just wondered what the status is. It looked like on the plan, the plan that you're showing now, on the comment about review altering the proposed sidewalk on Colon Street, so the street trees can be placed between the sidewalk and the road, which in Ann Arbor is, University of Michigan is a very common sort of design, which is very nice. These plans don't show that. I wonder what the status is and the commitment is to incorporating that kind of a change into the plan?
Surely, yeah, that change will be done. We needed to just confirm that the sidewalk would end up in the city's right-of-way when we did the switch. We're talking about the section, this one section here has the sidewalk here and trees there. We are, in fact, able to swap that. So go blue, and yes, we're going to swap that.
Okay, so that will be happening, good. And then the other, the other piece, and then I'll be done, boring my fellow councilors. The DRB talks about alternative materials to the stamped concrete footpath, lighting fixtures and benches so that they look more historically classic and less modern in style. Can you elaborate on what the commitment, you know, I don't know what the details of that are, but the commitment to make that change?
Yeah, the change will be made and we will go back and show the DRB what we're up to. The lighting fixtures we chose were quite modern. The idea on preservation is if something wasn't there historically, to make sure it's clear that it wasn't original. But we might have pushed that modern level a little too far, so we're finding something that's a little more transitional, if you will, for the lighting fixtures. And in terms of the stamped concrete, yeah, we were out front here, we had proposed a concrete pattern that's sort of, you know, where you stamp a pattern in the concrete, and we're looking at alternative materials to change that, to enrich the front, you know, this is our front doormat, and certainly we all want it to be, you know, good and rich-looking and work with the building face. So we will be presenting alternative materials for that. The benches also were a little bit more, maybe say stridently modern, and we've turned the modern meter down a little and got something more transitional in style, clearly not historic, too historic, so it's clear that these were not part of the original building.
Yeah, I know that these questions could get to the issue of aesthetics and some people prefer sort of a more, in general, you know, have sort of a more modern point of view in terms of design. But, no, this looks good. I'm, you know, I'm glad there's a commitment to follow through with the DRB on, you know, incorporating their comments as part of the finished product. So with that, I will stop asking my very detailed questions and just go back to indicating that I think it's a terrific project and will be pleased to be voted to approve this special permit.
Thank you, Council.
Great questions, Council Hausmann, and great answers. Let's go to Council Freyde, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, again, I feel that this is the best possible reuse for this project. It's incredibly comprehensive what you've provided us. You've got the A-Team of presenters tonight with Miranda and Thad and Andrew. Great to see everybody again. My question is, this is a very ambitious project. It's probably at the top of anything you've ever done before. Can you talk a little bit about, maybe, Andrew, the financing that you have set in place? If you're using local banks, as you've done in many of your other projects? And I'm sure there's going to be unforeseen things that pop up. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you, Council Freyde. It's a, it's a great question. This is largely driven by two main financing sources, the low-income housing tax credit and the historic tax credit. We've already submitted the first historic tax credit application. We were able to do that in April in some significant measure due to the timely responsiveness of the city staff and boards. We wouldn't have made that without everybody really pulling in the same direction, so we're grateful for that. And the low-income housing tax credit will run through the state, which is very similar to other projects we've done. We used it at Turtle Creek and at Harbor Lighthouse, and we'll use it at Anchor Point up by the high school. So those are the two main drivers. There'll be some bank debt. We don't know who that'll be yet, but there'll likely be some smaller, more modest debt on the deal. But those two pieces are really the predominant pieces. We have applied for local community preservation committee money and Affordable Housing Trust money, and we'll pursue those. But as we said, the largest driver is going to be those two other federal sources. The low-income housing tax credit runs through a funding, competitive funding application round with the State Department of Housing and Community Development, and that funding round has been moved up this year a little bit to November 1st. So we'll submit the pre-application this November and the full application in January. And so those are really the drivers. There is some other subordinate debt that also comes from the state that we'll pursue, but it happens through the same process. So it is certainly a very complicated financing structure, but that's how the, in some ways, if you went back to the beginning and looked at the objectives we were trying to achieve, don't make the building bigger or smaller, preserve the historic integrity, create affordable senior housing and preserve the open space. The historic tax credits are directly tied to the preservation of the building's size and existence and historic elements and the theater. And the tax, the low-income housing tax credits are tied directly to the affordable senior housing. So the concept, as it were, and the community objectives are attached to the financing and the use and the sale price, frankly. So that's a quick, a quick version of how it's going to get done and the timing of the application for the low-income housing tax credit, which will be the primary equity source for the deal. Wish me luck, wish us luck. Can't hear you, President Guatsim, can't hear you.
I just swore too. I'm sorry, I shut my microphone off because I was eating. What is the timeline on permitting and eventual construction activities, asked by Morgan Gardner?
Sure. And so this, interestingly enough, in terms of permitting, this is the last element of the permitting. So it's been through Parking and Traffic and Design Review Board and Planning Board. And so in this case, uniquely, because it's a public building, as Miranda mentioned earlier in the conversation, the city council has the authority to grant the permit. So the determination of the city council will be the final element of the permitting of the site. Construction timing will be driven largely by the financing time. So when the state decides to finance this, construction will happen some period after that, probably in the six to 12 months range after the financing has been committed. So we won't know when the construction will start until we know when the financing will be made available by the state. That application is the one I mentioned, which will be made for the first time in November of 2020.
Great, thank you, Mr. DeFranzo. Let's go to Council Casey Ames, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a great three-year project. And Council Freyde, that was a wonderful question about the financing. I was hoping, Mr. DeFranzo, you could speak directly to the, maybe, the dollar amounts for the city part of this funding. And then the second thing, excuse me, I'm on my speaker. The second question is just regarding your, the putters. And I know there are some here online, and just in terms of their best lines of communication, because they'll be going to a lot, you know, that once this construction happens. And I know that there are currently some light blue shoes and just the best way for them to be able to communicate with you now and moving forward. Thank you.
Sure. Yeah, your first question, Council Ames, and this is, of course, in your ward, so we're cognizant of that and would want to demonstrate a level of respect for that specificity. Your first question was around the city funding. You mean funding for the project? Is that what you're referring to?
Yes, so whether it's CPA funds or what you're looking for moving forward, you know, from the city.
Yeah, so we already submitted applications for both of them, for CPA funds and for Housing Trust funds. I don't have that number in front of me, but one of my colleagues may be able to pull that out while we're on the call and he can get that for you.
Andrew, it's Darcy.
I was hoping you would, Darcy, go ahead.
Yeah, no, no, go ahead. I emailed it, I texted it to you.
Oh, good. That was my signal. So when that text comes through, I'm going to tell you what that number is. And the second question regarding the notification, there are really two ways that people are going to be able to get, or three ways that people will be able to get in contact. At the moment, right now, there is the co-urbanized site, which is up, that we're populating with information. I'm not sure if we can put that link up in the chat box here. I don't know that we have that authority, Darlene, to insert. I don't know that we have that authority, Darlene, to insert to the chat box on this format, maybe not. But there is a website, a Courbanized website, just for the Briscoe project. So if somebody Googles Courbanized Briscoe School, it'll pop up. And that is, that has a communication feature that people can use. It also has updated current information extensive that people can see. So they can continue to use that as they wish. We also, the two other ways are people obviously can contact us directly, as they have been doing. Oh, great. That worked. Thank you, Darlene. There's the link to Courbanize in the chat box if you want to check that out. So people can contact us directly if they have questions and we're right here and responsive to that. So the question, the point you made about the individual on Mason Street with the light pollution, we've been in discussion with them about that to see if there's something that can be done in the interim. But that'll be ongoing. Obviously, we'll be here, so if they need us. And then there'll also be very likely designated communication during construction with the contractor on the site. So whoever the representative is going to be with the GC on the site on an ongoing basis. So I expect those to be the three simplest ways. People could look up themselves on Courbanize. They could contact us directly, including me here locally, and they'll be able to, there'll be some formal interaction with the GC around specifics. I do have the numbers for you on the local funds that we're getting pursued, so I'll give you those real quick. So we asked for the, from the Community Preservation Committee, which ironically, I think as Councilor Freyde has referred to, this sort of incorporates, this is almost like the CPA in a nutshell, because you have historic use, you have open space and you have affordable housing. Application was for $700,000. The Affordable Housing Trust was for $200,000. Those are both local funds. And we also are intending to ask for Beverly Home Funds, which is a federal source that the city has control over in small allocations. We're asking them for $100,000 from the city's federal home allocation. There'll be other things way more than that from the state and the region, but I think you were asking specifically the city. So CPA at 700, Housing Trust at 200, Beverly Home at 100.
Thank you so much.
You're very welcome. Those were your questions.
They're great. And I just also want to say thank you very much for applying for local preference. I think that's really great for us regionally. And I have confidence that you will go the extra mile to communicate with the Butters in this neighborhood and do whatever is practical. And even a little more than that to make this, you know, a real neighborhood effort.
Thank you. That's kind of you to say, and I hope to live up to that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Ames. Any other questions or comments from members of the city council? Do any members of the public wish to speak, make a comment or ask a question? Going to go quick. No, I'm going to turn it back to Miranda Gooding to wrap things up.
Thank you, Mr. President. And thanks, thank you, members of the council, for the good questions on this project. My apologies for dropping off for a bit due to the technical difficulties, but I was able to at least listen for a part of it. I think at this point, I know that, as I mentioned at the outset, we submitted proposed findings and a proposed vote, as well as proposed conditions through the Planning Department, which I believe the council has in your packet. And if the council is so inclined, we would be asking for a vote approving the proposed decision prepared by Ms. Nguyen and submitted to the council. I am happy to answer any questions or to give you a summary of the various components of the decision, if that would be helpful. I will, I will take your lead. A lot of this, you know, I think what we've done is try to summarize the basic project components, the relief that we are requesting and that the council would be voting to grant, as well as the required findings under Section 300-91B of the zoning ordinance. And we've incorporated, I think, sort of the standard conditions, including the conditions referenced by Councilor Hausmann that are called out in the DRB recommendation, the Planning Board recommendation, parking and traffic. All of those would be incorporated by reference into the council's vote for you to adopt this proposed decision. And I guess I will speak to two particular conditions that were called out in our application materials and incorporated here as well. One is to carry forward the commitment to apply for, with the city, to DHCD for up to 70% of the affordable units being restricted for local preference. And that would be incorporated into the council's decision. And the second sort of special condition, if you will, is that in the event that as this project unfolds, the building is completed and comes online and is ready for occupancy before all of the site improvements to the city's property are completed by the applicant, we would be permitted to go to the Planning Board to request a bond to secure completion of those items while allowing for the certificate of occupancy for the building to issue in the meantime. So those are sort of the two unusual conditions and the others are what you would typically see in a special permit decision issued by the Planning Board.
Thank you. I almost called you Councilor Gooding. Sorry about that.
That works.
It was a long time ago, wasn't it? Oh, I could call you counselor in terms of your profession too. Councilor Hausmann chimed in. Councilor Hausmann?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, one thing in looking through the conditions that I did not pick up on earlier, I think this is an Andrew DeFranza question. The affordable housing is in perpetuity, but it also says that after the initial term of affordability restrictions expires, the affordability restrictions for the residents shall continue in perpetuity but may be adjusted to allow occupancy by moderate income households up to 80% AMI. So if you could just talk about the initial term affordability, how that interacts with the restrictions, which are in perpetuity but can be adjusted so that we no longer, I gather, necessarily would have 16 and 30% AMI and so forth.
Yeah, that's a great question. That's definitely a me question. So you were right about that. So there really are two drivers here, two lanes. One of them, the affordability that is based on the permit, which, the authority of which is rooted in this, in the city council as it relates to the special permit, calls for 12% of the units at 80% AMI or below. This project obviously happens to be infinitely more magnificent than that in its affordability, which is the intent. But that is created by the financing. So if you view it as sort of a smaller tent inside of a bigger tent, the big tent is the permit. That gets you 12% of the units at 80% of median. We're doing, we're going to do much, much more than that by missional intent. But the smaller tent, the lower levels of affordability, as it were, are driven by the financing that I described earlier to Councilor Freyde, the low-income housing tax credit and in some measure, the historic tax credit. And so the period of affordability refers to the low-income housing tax credit, which is a financing mechanism. And that has a window of roughly 30 years of compliance. So there is a possible future world in which you could end up in a situation where you, where for whatever reason, the financing was no longer in place or available. And we still wanted to say this will still be affordable based on the city's parameters below 80% of median. That's an imperperity commitment. But it might have to adjust based on what the financing is underneath the project within that larger context in some future realm. That's highly unlikely, but that's what the provision speaks to. So if for some reason, let's say, project-based vouchers 50 years from now no longer exist, then you wouldn't be able to do 30% units anymore. You'd have to do some other percentage. Now, you know, that, it will be unlikely, like I said, for that to happen. Turtle Creek, for example, was built in the mid-'80s and has been 100% affordable with vouchers since that time, but you never know. So in this case, we want to make, we want to be very clear that the permitting drives the 80% level in perpetuity. It doesn't drive the financing limitations or parameters. Those are driven strictly by themselves, by the financing. This is strictly in perpetuity at 80%.
Yeah, so I think I followed. So in other words, the 30 and the 60 AMI percent connect with or corollary to the kind of financing that's available now that might not be available in 30 years.
Correct. Right, right. That's right.
Whereas the 80% is in perpetuity regardless.
Correct. Correct. And that 80% is vested in your, that'll be vested in the permit.
Right. Okay. All right. Thank you. That's satisfactory. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Hausmann. Great question.
It is.
Anybody else? A couple of things. I just want to say thank you to everybody that presented and everybody that provided us all this information before the meeting. Being in this position really gives us a greater sense of what the members of the Planning Board and the Zoning Board of Appeals do when they grant special permits. It's a hell of a lot of, a hell of a lot of work. And I mean, I feel, because I'm so excited about this project, I've been around a long time. And this project fills all kinds of needs here in the city. And Eaton Communities and Harbor Lake Community Partners really paid attention and followed what the vision of your elected officials are. Now, I got a question for, yeah, Councilor Gooding again. No, I have a question for Ms. Nguyen. Ms. Nguyen, Darlene, are you with us?
Yep, I'm here.
So if I asked her, what should you do, grant the special permit, how would my motion read?
Um, can I not write that in there for you?
I'd just like to hear you.
Yeah. So I would, let's see, that's the wrong one. I didn't even open it. I'm trying to see. I feel like I need to find it. A motion to, it would be, it would be a motion to accept. So these are always complicated, I guess. It's easier to do it in parts, too. So you could do a motion to accept the special permit. I would recommend that you reference the order number, the address. And I do believe I mostly wrote it in the decision in this way, but it, written word sounds different than talking. But a motion to accept the special permit as referenced in the application, and I said reference the order number, the address. And then, but you would also make a motion to make, to make the findings. And so it could be one long motion to make the findings, confirm that it meets the special permit criteria, approve the permit subject to conditions. Those are the kind of three pieces of it. And they could be done as in parts, or you could do it all as one motion.
Okay.
Mr. President, yeah, if I may make a suggestion, I think it might be easier for us to do it in those three parts. Findings first and then so forth. Just, obviously, your discretion, but I think we'll find it easier.
Like I said, we haven't done this in quite some time, so I am open to all kinds of suggestions. Believe me, I'm not a dictator. You know that.
Ms. Nguyen, if I may, through the president, do we need to read these out loud for the record?
No. I think you could, you could reference that they've been available.
Okay.
I don't know. That would be, you could read them if you choose to.
If I may, Mr. President?
Ms. Gooding?
One alternative available to the council would be to essentially adopt by reference the findings that are, and as Councilor Hausmann said, you could do it by section, but you could adopt by found, by reference the findings in the draft decision before the council and then adopt by reference the proposed vote and proposed conditions.
Adopt by reference the proposed findings for meaning a special, for meaning the criteria for a special permit?
Those are two separate things.
Oh, those are two separate things.
Well, there's, they're findings and then findings that you met the criteria of special permit.
This is hard because we can't, we can't take a recess and go into a committee room and figure everything out.
Yeah.
So you know what I'm going to do if it's the will of the council? I mean, this all sounds great. I would love to approve it tonight, but I don't want to do it and make a mistake. Can we refer back to the Committee on Legal Affairs and vote it out on Monday, the 6th, properly? Or if somebody wants to text me some language so that I don't make a mistake, because there's a lot at stake here.
Mr. President, may I ask a question?
Of course.
Is there, to Councilor Gooding, is there a time sensitivity to the council's taking a vote this evening versus July 6th?
Thank you, Councilor Hausmann. There is not. We are moving on pace and we want the council to be happy and comfortable with its decision, so we can certainly accommodate the extra time if that's needed.
Council President?
Council Hausmann, go ahead, yeah.
Yeah, it would, it would be a little long-winded to read this, but I would be willing to make a motion and read this in parts. It would be more efficient to incorporate by reference, but what I have to incorporate by reference is an undated document. And so I'd be concerned about incorporating by reference a somewhat indistinct document that might be unclear in that regard. So I will defer to you whether you want to, you know, postpone this to the 6th and be, you know, better prepared for how to do it. Or if you're so inclined, do this more laboriously. Or if Councilor Gooding has a suggestion about how to reference this in a way that she would feel comfortable with, it would be binding, I'd be happy to consider that as well.
Ms. Gooding?
I think that I would feel comfortable, I would feel comfortable referencing the draft decision submitted via email by Ms. Nguyen to the council. I believe the email was dated on Saturday with the draft decision. And I think that would provide sufficient clarity as to the document itself, recognizing that the decision that will be issued will obviously include the proposed findings and vote and conditions that you've had, that the council has had to review, assuming, again, that everybody is comfortable proceeding at this place. I think that that would be procedurally permissible.
Mr. President, if I may?
Of course, Councilor Hausmann. Would you like to make that motion?
Yeah, I'm getting ready. I have a question for Councilor Gooding in that regard. So the motion would be to incorporate by reference the draft document submitted on June 27th to the council by Ms. Nguyen? Is that accurate?
Correct. I'm just checking my email to make sure as we speak that that is correct. Darlene, I don't know if you have it in front of you, but yes, it's Saturday, June 27th.
It was Saturday.
Okay. Let me take a crack at this. I can always withdraw my motion if Councilor Gooding, uh, thinks that there's a defect in, in how I read this. But let's give it a go if you're willing and, and, uh, we'll see where it takes us. All right?
I would entertain a motion, Councilor Hausman.
Excuse me. Let me turn off my phone. I have a judge calling me. Um, let's see. Where was I? Okay, um, I would like to make a motion that the City Council approve Order Number 110, application for special permit for residential reuse of former public building Briscoe Village for, for the Living and the Arts, 7 Sawyer Road, Briscoe Village LLC, by incorporating by reference the text of the document, uh, consisting of proposed findings, proposed vote, and, and, uh, and special permit conditions that was emailed to the City Council by Planning Director Darlene Nguyen on, uh, June 27th, 2020. Does that work?
I think that works.
Ms. Nguyen, it sounded pretty good to me. I would, uh, second to Councilor Hausman's motion. How about a roll call vote, Ms. Kent?
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Clarity?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Matundo?
Yes.
Guanci?
Yes. Uh, motion passes eight to zero. Special permit granted.
16 years on the ZBA, you know, pays off, I guess.
No, it, you just, you can say whatever you want, but those six meetings have to bale me out like that. No time for your comments.
Thank you very much, everybody.
No, thank you. But, uh, exciting time for the city, you guys and, uh, uh, the city as a whole. Much appreciated. All right, on to our next agenda item.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Hang around. Uh, Ms. Kent, we're going to do reports from committees?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you want me to read them or just read the?
You'll read them.
Okay. Order number 134. Dear Honorable City Council, I hereby appoint, subject to your review and recommendation, Darlene Nguyen, Planning Director to Service, trustee of the Beverly Affordable Housing Trust. Ms. Nguyen will fulfill the term of former Planning Director Aaron Klaassen. Her term is effective until January 31st, 2022. Sincerely yours, Michael P.K. Hellmayr. We first read it on 15th.
And a motion to approve?
So moved.
Roll call?
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Clarity?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Matundo?
Yes.
And Guanci?
Yes.
Order number 73, we are not going to, that's what I talked to you earlier about today with the proposed payment to, um, the Retirement Board of the City Ordinance. This was the time you asked me about.
Yeah, we could deal with that next week. We'll talk about it this week.
Okay.
Move along.
Order number 133. Dear Honorable City Council, I hereby appoint, subject to your review and recommendation, the following citizens to serve on the Human Rights Committee. Mr. Salvador Di Mercio and Principal Gabrielle Wannavinci. This terms, their terms expire on April 4th, 2023. Sincerely yours, Michael P.K. Hellmayr. And this we heard it on June 15th as well.
Uh, motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call?
Ames?
Yes.
Clarity?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Alston?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Matundo?
Yes.
Guanci?
Yes.
Order number 131. Dear Honorable City Council, I hereby appoint, subject to your review and recommendation, Jessica Whitren, Attorney, 65 Lexington Circle. Guanci, to serve on the council on aging, and respectfully request that you waive the residency requirement. Ms. Whitren is an attorney with the Beverly Law Firm of Glasky and Glasky, and her terms are available to the council. The parole detected till June 48th, 2023. Sincerely yours, Michael P.K. Hellmayr.
And Ms. Whitren has been, uh, on the council of aging for a long time. So I would entertain a motion to waive the resident, residency requirement and approve the appointment. So move.
Second.
Roll call?
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Clarity?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Matundo?
Yes.
Guanci?
Yes.
And order number 132. Dear Honorable City Council, I hereby appoint, subject to your review and recommendation, Mr. Kevin
Ascalillo.
For Sherwood Lane, Beverly, to serve on the Beverly Goblin Tennis. His term will be effective until February 1st, 2023. Sincerely yours, Michael P.K. Hellmayr.
Thank you. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Roll call?
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Clarity?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Hausman? Rand?
Yes.
The Hausman?
Yes.
Guanci?
Yes.
That's all I got.
Okay, um, great work tonight, team. Uh, great questions. The presentation, I think, was outstanding. Uh, it's something we all have, uh, we'll all be looking forward to, to watch its progress. Um, I, we talked about having a meeting on Monday, the 6th. We have to do it on Tuesday, the 7th because, um, Monday is a holiday at City Hall. Because the holiday falls on a Saturday. So I'll ask Ms. Kent to tentatively post that meeting for 7:00 PM on Tuesday, the 7th. Long night, but well worth it. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ames?
Yes.
Matundo?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Clarity?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
And Guanci?
Yes, and Councilor Hausman, you get the MVP award tonight. Thank you so much for your help. Good night, all.
Night. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.